Good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is April the 26th, 2022, and it is 5:21 PM. I'd like to open the meeting and invite Chloe Cave, the Hawthorne Student Council President, to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chloe. May I have approval for the agenda with minus? I'm gonna make one adjustment. Approval of the agenda moving item 11B to follow item 11, I mean, follow item eight. I'm gonna move Eli's presentation.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. Dr. Breggy, would you like to report on closed session?
Yes, President Wells, the Board of Education has voted 4 to 0 to approve the settlement for OAH case 2022-010492.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Sarah Kaver for our teacher-student spotlight.
Good evening, President Wells, thank you so much for having us. Board of Education, Dr. Breggy, thank you so much for inviting us. I'm Sarah Kaver, I'm the principal, I almost said president. I'm the principal of Hawthorne School. And I'm with Leat Keynes, who's a special education teacher. Leat is in her second year at BHUSD. She taught for two years for Teach for America and L Unified, and got her master's in special education. She's an incredible teacher, and she's really made a home for herself within the 5th grade team and with the 5th grade students, all the 5th grade students. And as part of that, she led a project that we call the Butterfly Project. Before I invite Leat up here, I just want Ms. Keynes up here. I just wanna also say that there's three of the four 5th grade teachers that are here to support our students. So just wave so that everyone knows who we are. It's Tanya Guerra, and then Lindsay Holberg, and Nicole Snidwin, and also the wonderful Kevin Painters here, the assistant principal. And with, we have four students that are here. Mila Fekri, I wanna make sure, Riley Metcalf, do you guys wanna come up here? And Chloe Cave, and Enzo Jadidalafi. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having Hawthorne come talk about this meaningful and inspirational project. The Butterfly Project, named after the poem written by Pavel Friedman in the concentration camp, is a call to action through education, the arts, and memorial making. In many cultures, the butterfly is a symbol of rebirth and hope. As educators, it is our responsibility to learn from these horrific events of the Holocaust and teach our children about the dangers of bigotry, hatred, and discrimination. The program teaches empathy and action as a call to action. The 5th graders participated in a three-part learning. They watched the award-winning documentary, The Last Butterfly. They listened to stories of children, of Holocaust survivors, and then created their own butterflies. The butterflies will be placed on our newly painted mural in front of our herb garden. Our vision is for each 5th grade year to add to the legacy by creating a butterfly on the butterfly wall in memory of the 1.5 million children who perished in the Holocaust. And I'm so honored to introduce our four Hawthorne students who are gonna talk about their experience and learning.
Hi, I'm Chloe Cave, and I'm here to share my experience with the Butterfly Project. And I am a student at Hawthorne Elementary School, and I'm in Ms. Holberg's 5th grade class. This is our butterflies that we made in Ms. Federman's class. It was really fun, and everyone's is unique in their own way. After watching the award-winning Holocaust video, there was a deep hole in my heart. It was a horrible time in history and something no culture should've gone through. The Holocaust lasted two full years and ended on May 8th, 1945. This time was something I will never forget. The video showed what the concentration camps looked like. When I heard that they were kept and treated poorly just because of their appearance and their culture, made me tear up. The video also showed that 1.5 million children were just killed because of who they were and what they looked like. It was cruel. All of their joy and harmony that they had brought together was all gone and held in the hands of the Nazis. The Nazis made old Jews wear yellow stars pinned onto their striped uniforms. If one Jew took this off or didn't wear it, they would be killed, even babies. A man in the video who was a Jew had been captured by the Nazis. The video showed what he looked like before the Holocaust and after. This before showed a kind man who was happy, joyful, proud, and thankful of who he was. Seeing after, he was miserable and wearing a black and white striped uniform with half of his hair shaved off. No culture should've ever gone through this, so we want to show them the light, another butterfly. I have learned that you should never be ashamed of who you are based on your religion, skin color, gender. I have learned to be an upstander so that an event like the Holocaust will never happen again. I think that us 5th graders are gonna start this tradition and have it go on through the years of Hawthorne Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Riley Metcalf, and this is my butterfly that I made. It's all unique. After watching the video and presentation, I was excited and sad to create my own butterfly. We're making the butterflies to represent freedom and hope. We're making the butterflies in memory of the 1.5 million children who were killed. In Ms. Federman's art class, we made our own butterflies using clay and glaze. We first started by using different butterfly-shaped cookie cutters to cut the clay out. After we finished cutting them out, Ms. Federman gave us picks and wooden press tools to add texture in our own design to the butterflies. Everyone's butterflies were all unique and didn't look the same. When we were all done shaping the butterflies, Ms. Federman put them back into the kiln to harden them. The week after, we all painted the butterflies with all different colors and designs. Ms. Federman then put the butterflies back into the kiln to harden and make them shiny. When all of us got our butterflies back, we were so happy to see them. And now they're being hung up in the herb garden at Hawthorne. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Enzo Jad, and this is my butterfly that we made in our class. When I was growing up, my mom always talked to me about the Holocaust. I learned that no one stood up for the people during the Holocaust. People knew what was going on, but no one did anything. We need to learn about the past so we can do better. Everyone should study, everyone should stand up because it only takes one person to make a difference. We need to learn to not be mean. I think that everyone should make a butterfly to remember the 1.5 million kids who died in the Holocaust. Oh my god, my eyes got bloody.
Hi, my name is Mila Fekri, this is my butterfly. I'm in Ms. Guerra's 5th grade class, and this is what I thought of the Butterfly Project. The Butterfly Project is the most beautiful and amazing project I've worked on. Teachers and volunteers took the time to speak with and educate the 5th grade students about this horrible time in our history. A tragedy like this should never happen again. What Hitler, his followers, and Nazi army did to the Jewish and disabled people was horrifying. Why would anyone wanna kill others for how they look or what they believe in? I'm so sad thinking about all the people forced into concentration camps, separated from their families, and killed. I was devastated to learn that 1.5 million children died in those concentration camps. After the presentation, I went home and asked my mom if anyone in our family died because of what Hitler did. My mom shared that my great-great-grandparents died in concentration camps. Knowing this saddened me even more. After school presentation, each kid in 5th grade was given a different bio card to share the story of the child who he would be making a butterfly memory for. Even though I felt sad reading the bio cards, I felt proud to honor these children. I'm grateful that I'm able to participate in this project and have the opportunity to honor the child who perished. The Hawthorne Herb Garden is filled with butterflies of love and respect. I can't wait for this tradition to grow.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak, and hopefully we can come back next year and show you the butterflies that will be on the wall.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm gonna go around so that everyone has a chance to comment. Eli, would you like to start?
Sure. This is really an amazing project. I remember Ms. Kaver telling me about it a couple months ago, actually, and it's great to see the finished products and hear from all the students just how impactful it was for them and how, it's definitely, it's an extremely important thing to learn about, as one of the students said, so that we don't do it again. And so, thank you very much for doing this project. I'm really looking forward to seeing how it goes in the future and the rest of this year. So just thank you and great work.
Well, first of all, I was sitting here so touched by your presentation. It was amazing. And what you learned from this is even better because I'm sure you're going to carry it forward with you, but never wanting to miss a teaching moment. Do you know what today is? I got a smile there. Today is Yom HaShewa. Yom HaShewa is the memory of the destruction of the Jews and the Holocaust that occurred many, 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 1940 to 1945. So this is especially meaningful that you came today to present this because it just had even more of an impact. And I really thank you, and I hope that this continues going further and, I mean, going forward because you really did a great job, and I'm sure it will. Thank you very much.
Agree with everything that my colleague said. To the students, thank you guys so much for coming and sharing what this special project meant to you guys and how much of an impact it made on you. And special thank you to Leat, thank you for, you know, to taking the initiative and putting this project together. In this, you know, day and age with not only the anti-Semitism that we see locally, globally, and just, you know, the horrific acts happening in Ukraine, I mean, it goes on and on. And so, you know, I'll be taking the initiative and the time to teach our students these lessons and make sure the lessons of today, yesterday, are still resonating today and drawing that connection is hugely important. So thank you all.
Thank you so much for showing us this, you know, beautiful sentiment. I think the butterfly is always such a great metaphor, a great symbol of hope and beauty. And it just makes me smile to look at this. And I think, you know, the saying "never forget" is very important. We also do say, you know, that this should not happen again. Sadly, it does continue to happen, not just to the Jewish people, but of course what's going on in Ukraine and, you know, in the Congo a while back. I also wanna make a note of these wonderful, I think you call them battle cards, but it's really something to, you know, 1.5 million children is really a huge number, but when you look at these little profiles, I have Esther Goldstein here who was killed when she was only 16. And it's just really, it really brings it home when you can just think of one particular person who was slaughtered at the hands of evil. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I won't repeat what my colleagues eloquently stated. I will say, though, that when you hear a number 1.5 million, but then you look at the uniqueness of each butterfly, it reminds you that each one of those 1.5 million was a unique person. And it really reminds us the power of the character of a child. And it'll be a great, it's a terrific project. It's very touching. Thank you. Do you guys take these back so they can go up on the wall? Good. Don't trust me with anything breakable. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing your project, and thank you so much for teaching about this. I think it's just so important to have these lessons in school and to really teach us and to never forget and to learn the lessons from this. And I think that this lesson extends beyond for all of us and so many issues today that we all face. And that it's just so important for all of us to have this lesson about what hate can bring and to be an upstander. And I think it's such a wonderful lesson that you learn at school. And thank you for sharing it with all of us.
Students, outstanding public speaking skills, really. That was very moving, and you captivated our attention from the very beginning. To our teachers, you know, we keep adding to the lists of what we ask our teachers to do in the classroom. We don't take things off, we just keep adding to the list. And for you to find this meaningful and for you to embed this into your curriculum, I sincerely wanna thank you. It is not an easy task when you look at everything that you're responsible for doing throughout the year, but thank you for doing that. It's not easy to do, but you embedded this in such a meaningful way, and I really wanna reach out and give you a special thank you for adding this to your curriculum and your instruction.
Just a last comment before we go. I just wanna recognize that Felipe Gomez, who is our new painter for BHUSD, he helped to prepare the wall and secure all of the materials. So a huge thank you to him while we're here to make sure that everything was the right colors and the right materials for us. So thanks.
Beautiful.
Thank you again for having us.
It's really beautiful. Thank you all for being here tonight. Can we get a photo with all of you before you leave? That's awesome. Thank you, Sarah. This is really great.
Thank you, President Wells, sorry.
Sure. Well worth it. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be our student board member report from Eli Raymer.
Thank you very much. Let me get everything queued up. There will be some sound at some point, so I apologize if sharing my sound messes anything up. We'll figure it out once I do. Right, it sounds like we're good. So, this sort of, this report is kind of a mix of stuff from the last board meeting and so stuff pre-spring break, as well as a couple of new things that have happened, although... Yeah, so getting right into it. Of course, starting with the high school, as we do. Pass, Singing in the Rain, something major that I talked about upcoming for quite some time. So it's great to be able to report on the fact it actually happened. It was a fantastic show. There were four performances. It was truly amazing. I've gotten many, many positive reviews from lots of people in the community that they just thought it was such a fantastic production. It was a lot of fun to do as well. I know that both students in the pit and students on stage had, and students doing tech, we had just students doing so much of this actual production. And it really, well, as you know, it definitely would not have been possible without the dedication of so many students who took part in it. So here are some pictures from, I also have a video in a moment, but... And then, let's see if the sound works. Some of the major dance and musical numbers of the whole show, I can confidently say that that was the hardest music to play throughout, but it led to... but it led to something fantastic happening on stage. So I figured it was something good to show, to kind of encapsulate just the show in itself. And you can really tell how much talent all the students involved had. Coffee House, so this was a program that occurred last Friday that is put on by the vocal music program and it's sort of a showcase of their students just kind of in a more informal setting. So they held it on the third floor patio last Friday. Here are some pictures of students performing at that. Again, lots of talent at our schools. And in the future, well, actually kind of the future and the present, the BHHS Spring Orchestra Concert is this evening at seven o'clock at the Saban. That is why I'm dressed like this. But the, that'll be tonight. It's sure to be a, a great program with the concert orchestra, the chamber orchestra, and then also a full orchestra performing. And then also the Spring Band Concert this Thursday. And the time on the posters will update. It says seven, but it is now seven thirty at the Saban as well. And this will be, well, something kind of sad at this point, I guess. As many of you know, Mr. Bradbury is retiring, so these two concerts are his last two, essentially of his both teaching career and career in the district. So it's sure to be a, a very special night. So I hope as many of you will be able to attend as possible. Thank you. All right, on to Hawthorne. Oh, this is exciting. Mrs. Marcus, you're gonna like this. Mrs. Kress's chickens have hatched. So there, it's actually, they, they've been hatched for a bit, but now I finally get to show you guys. So there are some students with them, just observing them and hanging out with them. And there are some of the, the chickens. And I remember saying that they had, I don't exactly remember the number, but many, many different kinds of chicken eggs. And so you can see the, the variations in color and size of each of the, of the chickens. So I don't know how long they stay, but maybe they're still there. But just wanted to, they're gone? Okay. Good to know. But yeah, so there are the chickens. And then this is the California Art Education Association Art, Youth Art Month. There was a youth art showcase that four students at Hawthorne performed extremely well in. So going from left to right in here, this was the award ceremony for, I believe, the Southern California region, which is, it's truly fantastic. So going left to right, we have William Saggers, a kindergarten student at Hawthorne, who got first place in ceramics for Orange Bird. Then we have Asher Homron, third grade, third place for, in the terracotta clay slash glazed category for American Coil Pottery Lizard. Next, we have Anushka Shaw, fifth grade, first place in Fiber Arts for Shooting Stars. And Mia Corshidi, third grade, second place for Candle Making or Icy Treat. Here are pictures of some of the students. Not pictured are Asher Homron and Mia Corshidi. So fantastic job to Mrs. Fetterman and her students for performing so well on this and really making us proud. So this is, oh, let me preface this next one. This is something very near and dear to my heart. So my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Ziskin from Elrodio, sent me an email the other day about an event that she puts on every year and that has actually been on hiatus because of COVID. And she's finally had the opportunity to get it started again. It's called Niwala. And it's Halloween backwards and held on the halfway to Halloween essentially, on the, on the other side of the calendar from Halloween. And students dress up as idioms in classes and then do some, some trick or treating. And so the reason why I have this in the past section is because she sent over some pictures from when I was in fourth grade and did it. So that's some of the pictures at first to show you kind of what, what it's about. And then you'll see also again in the future, it's coming up this Friday, I believe. So, moving on. So some students dressed up as idioms, of course. There's piece of cake, the apple of my eye. Butterflies in my stomach, that is me, one in from the right. Yes, I, I grew out my hair for quite some time. Some more students, both Break a Leg and Two peas in a pod there. And let the cat out of the bag. So it's a, it's a great time. Students always have a lot of fun participating in it. I remember it fondly, so I'm glad that they're able to do it again. And future here is the poster of sorts for it. It'll be Friday, April twenty ninth. And students will be dressing up as, as idioms in the morning and then trick or treating amongst their class. So I should have pictures in the next report to show you this year's. And then Horace Mann. So for Women's History Month, they had some female members of BHPD and BHFD come and hang out with students and show them their respective vehicles and all the work they do. So thank you to Sergeant Audra Alatorre and Fire Engineer Melissa Hillis for coming out and showcasing their equipment and exactly what they do for all the students at Horace Mann. And that's it. Pretty short tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Would anyone like to go around for comments? Mrs. Marcus?
I love that you were bringing back singing in the rain, living it over again because I know how much that show was so great. I nicknamed it BTB, Better Than Broadway. It was better than Broadway. I'd just love to mention the chicken thing again because I remember how long we waited for those chickens to hatch. And then we, you know, we may get two dozen eggs and we, we, we take the percentage. We learned about percentages and that's how we taught percentages, how many would hatch and so on, and they would get. But as to not being able to keep them, their wings come out and then they fly all over, so you have to get rid of them. And that was, that was an exciting time. We had to go every day to look at another eggs and see how they were doing. I, I loved that, doing that project with the kids. Again, Eli, I love your reports and you just got to keep them coming because I just love them, so.
Nothing else to add except good luck in the performance tonight. And if you want to get us to dress up as idioms for one board meeting, I would, I would be game for that. That would be a lot of fun.
As always, totally delightful, Eli. Thank you so much. And I do, I did really like the chicken, the chicks. I mean, it's, it's so in line with spring. And I can only imagine with their wings flying around. It probably smells pretty bad too, but cute and they probably chirp and I think it's adorable. So, thanks for, spring chickens, that's right. That is. But thanks for sharing that with us.
I don't want to hold you here because I know you need to, to go. But it was great to learn that you used to be the bass player for Black Sabbath.
Thank you, Eli. And I just also would like to remind everybody about Mr. Bradbury's last concert, which is tomorrow, you said, right, at seven PM?
Thursday at seven thirty.
Our Thursday? All right, thank you.
Great report. So nice to see you in Singing in the Rain as well. Just to be able to watch you work with your skills and be part of such a, a bigger performance that for most high schools to take on. It was great to see you in that role and hopefully we'll be able to see you this week too.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right, the next item is staff presentations. We have our Moss Levy and Moss Adams audit reports.
I believe we're going to start with Hadley. Yes, welcome Hadley.
Okay, hi. Good evening. Sally Hoi, I'm from Moss Levy in Hafheim. I'm here to present the June third of two thousand twenty-one Measure E and Measure B H Bond Building Fund Financial Statement. And as for the, for the June third of two thousand twenty-one, we issue a, a modified opinion on the district bond fund Measure E and Measure B H. There's, we know, there's no material misstatement on the district financial statement. And there's no, there's no material weaknesses in the district internal control over the bond building fund. There were one finding noted related to the late payment, some of the late payment on the invoices. Other than that, there's no material weaknesses. And the financial statement is presented fairly and there's no material misstatement we believe present. So is there any question on the financial statement on the bond building fund?
Thank you for the, for the report. I guess one thing I just wanted to clarify for the community that's listening and also just for myself, the scope of the audit here is to just verify that, you know, how the dollars were spent and all the dollars were accounted for is no way in opinion in terms of whether the dollars were spent prudently, efficiently, whether, whether money was spent to market. It's just that this report, really the scope is to say that all of the dollars are actually accounted for with backup. Is that, is that roughly correct?
Yes, yeah, actually, yeah, all the dollar, all of the bond fund is accounted under the bond building fund, which is separate from the district general fund. And we also, we did also look at all the invoices and, 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 you know, like making sure this is all upon related expenditure.
The only comment that I would make, of course, this is a, here we are in, almost the end of April. And we're talking about money that this audit is for last June twenty-first. So this is sort of a lot of after the fact. And, and it's, it's comforting to know that with the audit, there was no major issues that were raised. So that going forward, I would assume that everything is still being going all right for next year's audit because this is already one year past due practically.
Does anyone else have any other questions? All right, I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you very much. Good night, Eli.
Next, for our performance audit report, I'd like to introduce Steve Bichetti. Hi, Steve.
All right, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right, good afternoon. My name's Steve Bichetti. I'm the engagement manager on the two thousand eight Measure E and two thousand eighteen Measure B H Construction Bond Performance Audit Report. I'm joined here with the talented Tammy Lore and Jordan Wall, who served as the Performance and Controls Project Managers on this engagement. Just as general background, the state constitution education code requires an annual independent performance audit to verify bond proceeds are used on the listed projects specified in the ballot language. Our audit procedures included both these minimum requirements as well as expanded procedures covering expenditure management controls, program controls, budgetary management and changeover reporting, procurement procedures and master planning controls. Our performance audit procedures covered the period July first, two thousand twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And our procedures covered both expenditure and effectiveness and efficiencies of the internal controls. And with that, I will pass it over to Tammy to go over audit standards and, and kind of background on, on that piece of the project.
Great, thanks Steve. Good evening, everyone. Tammy Lore with Moss Adams. Thanks for having us tonight. So just as a really quick overview, this performance audit was conducted under generally accepted government auditing standards, which do have a series of different requirements that are more or less sort of the gold standard of auditing, I would say, for, for governmental organizations. And really what that means is that there's a lot of work that we have to do as a firm to ensure our independence, to have good quality controls in place over our report and make sure that all of our findings and recommendations are supported by sufficient and reasonable evidence. So I just wanted to point that out before we get into our actual results. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jordan to cover the meat of our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of things before we get started. We'd like to note a few good practices that the district has implemented. The district uses a system called MOLista. Photos from the projects, I think most of you have maybe done a job site walk through this system. They also have a, the district utilizes other revenue sources to maximize the impact of bond program funds. And Citizen Bond Oversight Committee and Board of Education agendas, meeting minutes, annual reports are regularly posted to the district's website. And then bear with me while I get this green share up if I can. And I think this is the right one. Let's see. Now I can't see everybody else. Let's just make sure I can see everyone. All right. So as Sammy said, I will go through each of the objectives and observations that we've had. Some may be familiar from prior years. So objective number three, compliance with ballot language. Observation three, no exceptions. The district has addressed the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, MTA, and Federal Transit Administration, FTA, legal fees charged to the bond program. Observation from prior years. We noted no new MTA and FTA legal fees relating to the MTA's plans. For expenditure and payment procedures, observation four A, the district has taken steps to address this observation. Of the sampled expenditures, three of eighty did not meet public contract code requirements for payment terms. Now, upon review of this, three of those three did not meet public contracting code due to holidays. And the processor for these payments, the office was closed for the holidays. Observation four, also no exception, the district has addressed the payment procedures portion of the policies and procedures manual. Observation four C, the district has taken steps to ensure that the district are compliant with contract terms, which would address the compliance with state laws, district policies and other regulations, recommendations provided in our prior reports. As recommended and required by the contract, the district commenced a construction audit of the Beverly Hills High School B one, B two project in May of two thousand twenty-one, which was concluded in November of two thousand twenty-one. The improvement recommendation here, as provided by the leaseback agreements, the district should continue to conduct construction audits or review procedures to ensure any potential noncompliant charges are not billed to the district and to support transparency of the project. Objective five, salaries of district employees for the bond program. Observation five, no exception, the district has addressed the time tracking system for employees not fully dedicated to the bond program recommendation provided in the prior year's reports. Objective six, compliance with state laws, district policies and other regulations. Observation six, no exception. The district updated its construction and facilities department policy procedure manual and has addressed the compliance with state laws, district policies and other regulations, recommendation provided in prior reports. Objective seven, district and professional service staffing plan for the bond program. The district has taken steps to address the district's professional service staffing plan for the bond program recommendation provided in prior reports. On June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, the district approved the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two staffing plan for alignment to the contract. The improvement recommendation here is as a best practice, annual staffing plan policies and procedures should be available and include consideration of key metrics such as number of planned projects and dollar values of planned projects to help support consistent review. to help support consistent review and approval of organizational structure alignment to the bond program needs. Objective eight, design and construction cost budget management. The district has taken steps to address the design and construction cost budget management recommendation provided in prior reports. A bond program budget worksheet was presented in summary format to the CBOC in January of 2021. However, we did note uh, some additional um, let me see here, sorry, lost track where I was. We compared this to the GFOA and noted the following uh, areas of, that were included within the reporting. In addition, as a best practice, at a minimum, the following should be reported to the CBOC, a project list, any alterations to project budgets and a comparison of current project budgets and timelines. The improvement recommendation here is both the Daniel County Expert Association, GFOA recommends periodic reporting of budget to actual comparisons of revenue expenditures, schedule and fund balances. Uh, this information provides decision makers time to consider actions that may be needed if major deviations in budget to actual results become evident. This documentation also serves as a useful tool for district management and stakeholders to understand the timing of project schedules. Objective nine, bidding and procurement procedures. Observation nine is no exception. We end bond program procurements from the fiscal year and reviewed the district's bidding and awarding of bond program funding of construction projects and determine whether it, the procurement complied with requirements of state school construction requirements. We noted no exceptions in this area. Objective 10, procurement fraud prevention and detection controls. The district has taken steps to address the procurement fraud prevention and detection recommendation provided in prior years' reports. The district completed the Los Angeles Unified School District's Ethics Training titled the Gray Zone during the fiscal year as recommended in prior audits. Uh, the recommendation here is the district, the district should continue to document and implement policies and procedures to help identify, prevent and detect procurement fraud. Objective 11 is master planning. Uh, observation 11, the district has taken steps to address the master plan recommended and provided in years. Uh, the most recent comprehensive uh, strategic and long range facility master plan was available for, for review was dated October 21st, 2021. And the improvement recommendation here is as a best practice, project reporting of key information, including forecasts and commitment amounts should be consistently reported to district management and key stakeholders. Objective 12 is the bond program transparency. Uh, observation 12, no exception, the district has addressed the bond program transparency uh, recommendation provided in prior years' reports. And then that is the sum of it. The other observations are just summaries of prior years. It has been a pleasure to work with the entire Beverly Hills team again this year with this audit and communicating with them has been good. And um, we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the um, the master plan. Uh, the report that you mentioned was given October 21st of 2021. And yet, this particular performance audit only goes through the June 20, I mean, the end of June 2021, am I correct? So that the idea that there's, as far as the scope of the project for the funding is made, that was made known, you knew about that after that. So it would be very hard, uh, now that we know that we're going to be short of funds to have, I think that we need to think about the prioritization of how those funds are going to be available going forward. So I, I thank you for the presentation, but I am concerned about uh, the, the, the topic of master plan going forward in this particular presentation.
100%. And this has been a consistent recommendation over the years since we've been engaged uh, with Beverly Hills. So I think what you guys are facing is a common issue across a lot of organizations. So having that playbook of what, what are the priorities? Um, when, when funding is, there's a potential shortfall. So like, how do you, I mean, there's options. You can either get additional funding or you prioritize or de-scope things. So having kind of that decision-making process formalized so that it supports transparency on those kind of difficult decisions is a best practice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I don't have specific questions, just more of a comment to uh, my fellow board members and, and for the community. I think reading this was very uh, illuminating for me. And also um, was um, just kind of justified, I guess, some of the way that I've been feeling as a board member. Um, with seeing some of the recommendations here and seeing that these recommendations have been, some of them have been made year over year, noting that there has been progress. Uh, but some of the recommendations remain uh, that would give the administration, that would give the board um, more transparency uh, and, you know, a demonstration of accountability for how this program is run. Um, and, you know, I think this is a way that we've been feeling. I, I don't, I mean, I don't have specific questions, but you know, it, it, just reading uh, observation number eight specifically. I mean, this is almost word for word, something that we could have written ourselves. Um, there, there's the recommendation for periodic reporting of budget to actual comparisons of revenue expenditures, schedule and fund balances. Another part reads, this documentation will also serve as use, a useful tool for district management and stakeholders to understand the timing of project schedules. Information is essential input for demonstrating accountability and transparency. This is exactly what we've been talking about as a board. Um, so I, I appreciate having this report because I think the reason that I asked the question of in the previous audit is because an, an audit of financials should not necessarily make us feel good that we have a transparent and accountable program. That's matching, you know, invoices with warrants and actuals, fine. I think the performance audit is what we really should be looking at to understand what kind of program is being run here. And, you know, I've used the word opaque before and I use that word for a reason. And now, I guess, seeing this report, I'm, I'm glad that we're taking steps here to create a more transparent program with more accountability and, you know, to hopefully address a number of the things we've seen in our program to date. I think some of the issues have been structural, as we've talked about. I won't repeat myself because we, we've already stated these things on the record and talked about them a lot. Um, I guess it's just, it, it's, it's kind of a relief that I, I think for a while I was feeling like, baby, I'm crazy, that I'm getting the information I need. But I think, you know, that's kind of what this audit is, is saying to me. And so just wanted to share that comment with the board. Thank you.
Uh, nothing much further to add, but I really do agree with what Gabe have said, have said about accountability and um, opacity and understanding exactly what is going on and being able to see that internally and externally. Um, thank you, Moss Adams.
Um, thank you for the report. Um, the page 18, there is a list of observations that I've carried over from previous um, audits. And most of the comments are management response, district concurs, and the district has taken steps. So I don't know who uh, is here possibly that can answer to some of those to see, will these be captured in the next audit? Um, the 21, 22 audit. Um, is there going to be movement toward closing these items? And does anybody know that? Possibly? Bueller? Okay.
To the extent possible, we try to uh, address all of them before June 30th.
Right.
Know that they're cleared before the next audit cycle. But let me get back to the board with some more details.
Okay, because there are a few, specifically on page 18 of this audit, there's specific observations. Um, they say from, you know, going back to 2016 uh, to 21, um, you know, till last year. And I'm just wondering what the status is. I understand if it's a year or two back. You know, the, the, the way that the things move in, in procedural changes, but, um, and how they're captured on the audits. Um, other than that, it's um, I, I understand what you're saying, Gabe. It's also, I've seen, I don't know how many years of these audits, they used to be a lot thicker. Okay? Um, there has been such a remarkable amount of improvement in the program over time. Um, without saying, you know, admitting that there's always room for improvement. But I, I, I was, I didn't have enough time. I was going to go back and pull like a 2016 audit and tell you, there was like, you know, 40 findings as opposed to two. So um, just to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Um, I, I agree with the comments that have been made um, uh, from all of you, actually. I think there's been a lot of improvements that have been made over the years. And as well, there's uh, these other comments that we see that have been on year over year. I think my concern has always been with these comments that have stayed on. Uh, for example, the master planning and um, you know, item numbers uh, seven with district and professional services staffing plan and design and construction cost budget. That the, the issue for me with these items is that even though the, there's, you know, four items on here that to me, I, I find that they may be fewer items, but in terms of their weight, they're so important in terms of our ability to make decisions. And so uh, to be able to have uh, that information, and I think the CBOC has requested that information in terms of reporting. I think it's been, um, I think it's really important. And my recommendation would be that uh, as we're moving forward and getting into um, the budgeting process for the next fiscal year, that it would be wise, and I know I requested this last year and it kind of fell a little bit by the wayside and we kind of tried to merge it into our budgeting. I think it would be important for us as a board to have a study session to really look at these items um, that have been identified on, on this audit report uh, with um, with the C, CBO as we get, before we do the budgeting and so that we can really address them and make certain that we've, um, we get this information so that it can get incorporated into our budgeting for next year.
Uh, can I just make one more comment? Um, so appreciate Mr. Margot's comment about a continuous improvement. I, I'd, I believe that we've, that we've made tons of improvement over time. Uh, I also agree with Ms. Wells that, you know, the, these are, these are crucial points, right? And so I, I just want to make sure, you know, we are to some extent hitting, you know, a reset with the RFP that we're doing. We're going to be having a new CBO come in. And so I'm, I'm highlighting it to say like, now's the opportunity to really get ahead of this stuff. And uh, you know, make sure that to the extent that we, we can really have a best-in-class program where all of these things are going to be addressed going forward, that should really be what we're striving for.
Right. A, another suggestion and um, I would make for next year is that the board meet with the auditors uh, prior to the audit and as well um, after, before it gets presented so that we can have some input on that. Um, Stephen, can you tell us who um, from the district that you meet with?
Wade's our point of contact.
And is that the only district person that you meet with?
So we'll conduct interviews with other personnel, but Wade's our point.
Okay, because when you say the district approved the staffing plan, I just don't recall us approving a staffing plan this year.
Got it. If I'm, if I'm going off memory, I think it was, maybe Wade can um, advise. I think it was Wade approved and then board approved.
Right. I, I looked at the board minutes and I just didn't see the board ever approving the staffing plan. So when it says district, you're referencing Wade. Is that correct?
Correct. And if, if my memory is not serving me correct, then maybe Wade can weigh in.
Okay. Well, I think we can address that when we, we do a study session and we can go deeper into the different, the different issues.
If there's any way we can support you or attend and kind of provide details that kind of support the report, we're happy to support you guys however we can. So keep us posted.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful just so that we can really um, utilize the, I mean, we see the audit report year after year and I think that to really get the most benefit out of it so that we are more efficient moving forward, I think it would be really worth our while.
Great. You know, it's a little too hard to talk about construction audit and performance audits, so just let us know.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other comments? All right, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, may I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar minus item 10G.
All seconded.
The motion was made by No Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved 5-0. May I have a motion for approval of amendment?
I'll move to approve item 10G, the approval of the amendment to pro-care therapy master contract.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi.
Um, I pulled this one only to just maybe have a quick conversation about um, what kind of uh, services we're, we're just regularly offering at our um, schools for, for mental health services in general. Um, I just, I just wanted to have a brief conversation. I just know at this time, we've talked a lot about over, you know, uh, to COVID, how there's kind of been a mental health crisis among our, you know, students. And so as I saw this uh, come across, I just wanted to have a quick conversation and make sure we have adequate services being offered. Thanks.
Yes. Okay, so this is a contract that we have with an outside provider um, specifically to help fund the uh, MFT, the math, the marriage, family and counselor, therapist, ma, marriage, family, family therapist, counselors that we added um, after hmm, let's say December, December, January, because we were having a lot of incidents, um, particularly at our middle school with students in crisis. Um, our school psychologists were working overtime, doing threat assessments. Uh, we were working in collaboration with BHPD. Um, and just students were needing additional support. Um, it's kind of that gap that I say it's in between school counselors and school psychologists. Issues that they can't really address, but students were having um, issues that uh, was affecting their ability to participate in school. So this contract is to help fund those counselors. Uh, we have one full-time at the, at the middle school and we have another person who's working three days at the high school. Um, this is in addition to um, our PBIS um, implementation, our SEL, um, lessons that we're doing weekly across the district. Um, our counselors and school psychologists, this is, this is to address that need specifically. And we have um, seen uh, positive results. The, the amount of cr, of crisis that we're seeing have reduced. So we needed additional funding to um, complete their um, services through the year. So that was why the request was made.
Uh, thank you. As far as I'm concerned, dollars very well spent. I guess that, that was what I wanted to clarify. This is in addition to what we were already doing.
In addition, and to address a specific need that we saw for our students.
Thank you.
No, it's not. Well. I was curious to know about the elementary school, if there's anything there at the elementary school that is somewhat similar to this and how we're handling that.
Great question, Mrs. Marcus. Um, yes, um, we are expanding to the elementary schools uh, for the 2022, 2023 school year. Uh, we will have a, a full-time MFT that splits time between the two schools. Um, we are also working on a uh, SEL curriculum for the elementary schools. Uh, both uh, Mrs. Kaber and uh, Mr. Bugby are looking at a particular curriculum that we're looking at purchasing for next year. Um, but we didn't find a therapist that we thought was appropriate for elementary uh, in our interviews in this round. And our, our counselors and our school psychologists are handling, we're not seeing the same level of need at the elementary right now, but we intend to expand to the elementary schools for next school year. but we intend to expand to the elementary schools for next school year.
So, with the SEL, which is, um, social emotional learning, uh, so you guys are looking at, uh, doing class-wide and/or groups, for that, because obviously, as you know, you know, if you take out kids for one-on-one therapy, that's very, you know, resource intensive, and also takes those kids away from instructional time. So, I, I'm, uh, imagining that with SEL curriculum, you're looking at organizing more of a school-wide, group-wide type of thing. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, so actually, the, it's happening now and it's happening in both formats, both individually or small group and whole school and, um, um, in classrooms. Um, we're looking at a program called Second Step, and it will be part of the, the, um, daily curriculum or weekly curriculum that teachers are teaching and lessons built in into the, um, weekly, weekly lessons that they are providing to students.
And not to put you on the spot, but what are some of the themes?
I'd have to look it up, but I mean, it, it's, it's everything that we see, you know?
Yeah.
Making friends, entering groups, you know, talking, uh, how do you let someone know that they hurt your feelings, you know, without, you know, lashing out physically? What else? You know, asking for help, things like that, so.
Great.
Um, it's geared towards elementary students. Um, we have different resources for our middle school and high school, but this is, this is, these are directed lessons, um, for geared towards elementary students. So, um, we, a couple of our people, our staff members, including some of our counselors, have used it in other districts and they really liked it. So, we're looking at how it works for us. Um, we, we have, um, we haven't engaged in any contract, but we have some, uh, accounts, and we're letting some of the, um, site staff use them and look at them and see how, um, whether or not it would be beneficial to, for us to go ahead and, and buy it. So, we have some, some, uh, sandbox accounts.
And one final question is, it's always so hard to find time, I know, for all administrators to fit these types of things in. Any idea about how you would
Integrate it?
integrate that into like a weekly
Absolutely.
lineup of classes?
Yeah, it's, it's part of, it would be taught as, you know, we have, uh, like, for example, we have, um, the so- all-school assemblies that both elementary schools do. Um, we have things that we're working on where we're doing, where we're implement, where we're working on implementing PBIS. We could slide it right into there. Um, it can be, it can be part of circle time. I mean, there, there are opportunities.
Good, okay, thank you.
So, it's not an additional thing.
Right.
It will be integrated.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Laura, it's really great. I'm really happy to hear about that. All right, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes five zero. The next item on the agenda is, I just put my agenda away, I have no idea where it is. We're finished now.
So, we can go right into my report?
I think it's superintendent's report.
And I also have a, a short report, um, coming off of our, uh, our break. Um, I do wanna give everybody a, a quick update, uh, with COVID-19, um, and where we are, um, with our PCR testing, which, uh, ended and concluded, uh, last week, um, the week after spring break. We still have, and that was our PCR testing, we still have our rapid antigen testing, which is, uh, still a very robust program, uh, still offering more than most school districts, uh, in our rapid antigen testing, um, and it will remain available for the rest of the year. Um, we have had a decrease in, uh, the need and demand for, um, uh, our testing, uh, but we still have it available. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, returning to, um, the pre-Omicron rush, um, and, and to where we had a rotating cycle, the district office was open, um, every day, and then we had a rotating schedule at each of our schools. So, uh, we're looking at returning to that type of schedule. We just wanna make sure that we are, uh, readily available for our families, um, uh, and they, they are using our services, um, and so, but it is a, a schedule that it looks like we're going to be, uh, returning to, and that is one of a rotation. But if you can't keep, um, what school is, uh, having their, their day, um, just know that the district office is always open every day for this testing. Wanted to show you just a different way to break this out instead of going week by week. So, um, I wanted to just share with you from post-winter break, um, and the number of positive cases, uh, which was, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-three to where our post-spring break, where we are now, uh, which we have about seventeen cases. So, um, it does, uh, go to show you that we're really good, uh, perspective. I wanna thank, um, our teachers and, um, our school administration, um, and our families at home, because this is absolutely aligned to, uh, practices that are happening in our homes. Uh, this is an alignment that we have with our community, which really shows that there is a, a cognizant effort to, uh, keep our cases down. The dashboard that we still have on our website that we, uh, continuously update, we will continue to do that. But as you can see, that, uh, this is our last five days that we have, um, active cases for, um, our students are at nine, uh, zero for our staff, um, but this gives you a pretty good idea of where we are. Um, and as you are hearing news reports, um, we are holding our own and doing, um, a really good job of mitigating the spread. To have nine during this time, we feel really good about. And, and again, some of the mitigation efforts that are ongoing, that have become consistent practices, are things that we are continuing to do, and those things are working for us. I would like to talk just a minute about our strategic plan work, which is, um, a lot of work that's coming at, uh, the busiest time of the year for us. Um, and traditionally, we have done our updates and they've been our PowerPoint presentations. And, um, if you remember, it was an epic tale that, uh, never seemed to end, um, uh, that took away from, um, a lot of the good work that we're doing with our strategic plan. So, uh, tonight, we're gonna kick off, um, a little bit different, uh, differently, and we are going to, uh, start off with, uh, technology. We're gonna stagger these presentations. Um, we are adding a video component. Uh, but I will say, the, um, what was tricky about, uh, the first, uh, the first strategic plan initiative, uh, in technology by Mr. Damico, is that, um, you know, the, the security strategic plan, uh, is, is, um, uh, the IT security, the sustainability about the one-to-one program, uh, the budgeting that we have, and so that's tricky, uh, to put into, um, a video component. So, we did switch it around a little bit, um, after Mr. Damico. We're gonna, uh, follow up with a, a short video that gives you a behind-the-scenes, a lot of the people that don't get recognized in our schools or at our meetings, um, and so we'll use the, the video component in that way, because this was a little bit tougher to be able to demonstrate and show, uh, via, um, our video. But, uh, we're excited, in just a few minutes, we'll be, uh, kicking that off with Mr. Damico. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any comments?
No, I just wanna mention that I'm grateful that we're gonna be getting these in small amounts, because as you mentioned, Dr. Breggy, listing that whole time, I mean, it didn't do service to the people that were coming later as we got tired, more tired as the evening went on. So, I really am very appreciative of this, uh, one strategic plan per evening or maybe one or two.
Correct.
And I think it's gonna be, I think our community will also like it.
It was very valuable feedback.
I mean, I'm a little disappointed we're not gonna have that, you know, late-night bonding, but I'll, I'll get over it. No, thank you for the report, and, uh, I, I also, um, I'm just very pleased that we've been able to keep the, you know, COVID rates low. We've done a great job as a school district.
We have.
We've been able to phase back the, you know, to testing that we've been doing. So, just thank you to all the great work that the administration and all the staff's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I'm good too. I'm just so excited to listen to our, uh, strategic plan update, so.
Great.
We'll move on.
That's next.
All right. So, next we'll hear from David Damico and our strategic plan IT update.
I get all my, I've provided each board member with a packet of the slide deck and also just a, uh, copy of the script, the narrative that I'm sharing, so that, uh, you don't have to feel compelled to take notes more than maybe questions you wanna jot down. So, good evening, President Wells, Dr. Breggy, members of the board. I'm here tonight to kick off a series of presentations, uh, on the BHUSD strategic plan for year two. I'll be updating the board on the technology portion of the BHUSD strategic plan. And then can you, uh, so, so I wanna sharp, start with this video that Dr. Breggy, um, mentioned. He said it would go last, but I think I'll, I'll introduce you to the team. Is that okay, Dr. Breggy?
Absolutely.
It's in my script.
Right ahead.
So, uh, I, so I just wanna thank Rebecca Starkins for her work on, uh, helping this video, um, come to life. She's always very talented when it comes to these things, and, uh, so Rebecca, and whenever you're ready, press play.
Hi, I'm Robert Ramirez. I'm the tech support I'm the tech support specialist here at the district off-
Okay.
Hi, I'm Robert Ramirez. I'm the tech support specialist here at the district office. I help users get set up with their computers, user accounts, and email accounts. I also am responsible for managing the, um, district-wide help desk ticketing system, where users can contact any support specialist for help. I also am responsible for several, uh, software applications that we have with the district. One in particular is the one-to-one management of software for our district, um, laptops and our district, um, software. And recently, I was also given the project of implementing our new classwork management system. I'm a big Rams and Dodger fan. My wife and I like to go to as many games as we can. Go Dodgers and Rangers.
Josh McSengel, I am one of the technology specialists at Beverly Hills High School. I've been with the district for a little over four years. I work to ensure the technology is working in the needs of classes and the school, as well as provide support for events, including SLA classes, at the high school and the part of education meetings. I love technology and helping to make technology work and work better for classes in the school, and that my work helps the education of our students.
My name is Kristi Schaefer. I'm the systems administrator for Beverly Hills Unified School District. I love data. Data is one of the things, and I love working with, with my, all my friends that have been my friends here for the last almost twenty-eight years. When I'm not working, I am a foodie and I like to go to restaurants and I like to travel.
My name is Ruben and I'm the IT specialist for the high school. I provide direct support for teachers and students and sometimes parents with their technology needs. I really enjoy problem solving because I like the challenge and the satisfaction I get knowing I made a difference.
The team that wins will get extra credit and you will have a message at the end that says, "We broke out."
Hi, my name is Frank Oyara. I'm the IT specialist at Beverly Hills Middle School. Go Bulldogs! My job is to ensure that all technologies are available and functioning well. The most rewarding part is working with staff and students. They make me feel like a superhero whenever I arrive to fix their devices.
Hi, I'm Gray Anderson. I'm the technology specialist here at Hawthorne Elementary, going on my fifth year. Uh, I love spending time in the classrooms, uh, helping staff and students meet their goals.
I work at Horace Mann Elementary School. I've been here working with this for sixteen years. I love working with technology. What I love the most is working with staff and children.
Which we can make our own books, um, we did Black History Month, um, Dr. Seuss's birthday, um, yeah, I can show you Dr. Seuss's, um, Multiculture Week at Horace Mann, my tip, yeah, that's-
My name is Kartik Gopinathan and I work as a network administrator for the school district. My roles and responsibilities are to make sure the network, wireless, and internet are up and running all the time for our teachers and students. After work, I actually love to play and, uh, have fun with my son, Arj.
We wouldn't have our iPad without Mr. Gray or our TV or computers. He really helps us when things aren't working.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Thank you. Can you go to slide three on the slide deck? Perfect. In February of 2020, I presented a technology implementation framework, um, to the board at a study session. In that presentation, uh, I said we would focus on fiscal planning, implementation roadmaps, professional learning for certified and classified employees, and measurable classroom student and staff outcomes. I presented, I presented a slide like this one, uh, about getting to coherence and focus. I said that coherence is the result of fiscal stability, transparency, governance, and communication. I also said that the goal is to increase the overlapping areas between students, staff, and stakeholders. And so, um, through these practices of, of developing, um, fiscal stability within the department, transparency in terms of the work we do and how we share the projects that we're working on with the board and community, uh, and communication, uh, with all of our stakeholders. The goal has been to, to, uh, have those, that Venn diagram look more like, you know, the, the object that you see on the right, where you see, um, more, uh, more, uh, sort of combined, um, you see a more combined picture, which means that we're communicating in one voice with one purpose. And I think that that's a really big part of, um, the reason the district put together this strategic plan was to, was to make sure that that happened. Next slide. Uh, in education, we often refer to Bloom's taxonomy, which focuses on learning domains which are required for students to achieve and perform at a high level of rigor and engagement. In order to support deeper learning, the information technology team must ensure that everything from IT infrastructure to staff and student devices supports academic and the business goals and objectives of the district. Next slide. We articulated three goals within the BHUSD strategic plan for the, this school year, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and they are, goal one, IT security, develop comprehensive information technology security plan. Goal two, sustainability of one-to-one and school technology and school classroom technology, um, by developing long-term budgets for device and school technology replacement and maintenance of effort. Goal three, long-term budgets for device, school technology replacement, and maintenance of effort, um, through developing multi-year measure BH project projections, IT operations and position control budgets, and, um, and projects like the Horace Mann Theater Refresh, Refresh, which was on this year's strategic plan. Next slide. So, and when you look at the strategic plan, you see that the, those goals have been articulated on this matrix. Um, in July of 2021, we began working, um, with Vector USA to address our overall security needs in a first-phase set of activities that included critical systems data, uh, critical systems data inventory and profiling, network and security architecture and backup audits. And, um, there were a number of deliverables as well on this, um, that were, uh, in this first phase, and those things included reviewing our external, internal vulnerabilities, a review of our email security, a review of our network documentation, a review of analysis of our security architecture, a review and analysis of our backup architecture, an assessment of our da- data survivability, the creation of an information security strategic plan. And so, when, on that matrix, just, um, that, that's on the slide and on your slide deck, I just wanna note that the actions are on the left, those were the specific things that we were, that we called out in this goal, and the effective dates are all the way over on the right. And what I, what I did was I just sort of wrote in, as of the, this planned date, those projects are completed that, at that rate of completion. So, um, we're still working on item three, but we're, we're nearly there. I think, does it say a hundred? Might say a hundred. I think, I think I updated it, got it done. These tasks, along with deliverables, were completed in late February. Work continues on the highlighted tasks and should be completed by the end of June. We've engaged Vector to conduct a second-phase set of activities that will commence in, it says, uh, April on the slide deck, but it's gonna commence, um, later in May, a little, mid-Me- it says April on the slide deck, but it's going to commence later in May, mid-May. And these activities include information security policy creation and review, business continuity consulting, which will include a business process analysis, business impact analysis, and IT disaster recovery plan. Vector USA and I reported to you on the findings in a closed session in early March. IT security and BHUSD will mature and develop over the next four to five years. And we've taken the preliminary steps to identify areas of need, as well as consider what will be required to operationalize the recommendations. For this reason, IT security goals should continue to be in the BHUSD strategic plan for the next three to four years. Next slide. So we are looking right now at a high-level snapshot of where we were in October when Vector completed their findings. We've been working since October on recommendations and will provide an updated chart based on that progress in June. Note that basic on this chart, which is all the way over to the left, excuse me, is not a grade. This is a maturity scale. These boxes are also interdependent, which means that as we make progress on items like security implementation, it moves several other boxes to the right. The goal over the next four years is to move to the right, which reflects a higher level of maturity. You will see in the next several slides how we're documenting our process, documenting our practices and procedures, and how we're looking at these things as requisite requirements for ensuring that we're institutionally aligned to the security practices and standards that were recommended. The following slides are examples of how we're going about this. So if you could go to slide eight. So just slide eight is just kind of a graphic of how we took the recommendations that came in that security strategic plan, and then really how we kind of thought about them from the standpoint of, is this critical? And how complex is it? So you'll see that there's a box there for how critical it is and how complex it is. And we wanted to address the most critical and the most complex things, obviously, earlier because those things are important, and they take longer, and they probably require more budget commitment. And so we have done this for each of the items in the strategic plan that we got from Vector. And then what we've done is we've gone through each of those, and we've attached budget estimates. How much time do we think we need? How much money do we think it's going to cost? I used those numbers when I started working on budget development for the 21-22 fiscal year, 22-23 fiscal year. Some of this was in this current year's fiscal budget, fiscal year budget. And then on the right, we also just went down the list of those projects and said, what can we do ourselves? What can we do internally? What do we need some help with? And, you know, what do we need to kind of pay attention to as we go through these items? And so you have that full plan, but this is kind of an artifact of one of the activities that we have. Next slide, please. This is another just example. I have weekly meetings with my team, mainly with Karthik Gopinathan, who you met. He's the most kind of involved in this security project internally, and then with Vector USA, who was our consultant. And we just, you know, as we go through these meetings, we highlight those areas that we need to work on, areas where we need clarification. What are the projects? What are the requirements? And this is really just my way of working through this so that we are sure that we're going to get to the goal. And I have a way of sharing information and communication, as I do oftentimes in the board connections, about where we are in any given project. Next slide. We're also working on a policy manual. And so you see on the right there, it says, "Security action items." Those are all policies that we're developing. So the highlighted ones are policies that have been written in draft form. So there's a draft policy for everything you see in yellow. The policies that are not highlighted are policies that have to be developed in conjunction with the next part of our security consultancy piece when they do the business analysis. And then some of them are just, we're just not quite ready to put the policy together because we have to solve some technical problems to decide how we want the policy to read and to be presented. And so in that little middle section, there's just kind of a picture of what that draft looks like. Next slide. And then this is an example of workflow diagrams we're creating. So one of the recommendations was that we needed to make sure that we had we had to have everything documented and diagrammed. Our entire network infrastructure, all of our practices, all of the various pieces of our network. And so this diagram is kind of a really high level. This doesn't really show you what the box and wires look like necessarily, but it does kind of show you how complex our wireless network is and all the different pieces there are to make it all work. So we want to use this as a way to help people understand, you know, why we spend the money we do on all of this infrastructure. So for every device we have in the school district, for everything we do for kids, it rests on an infrastructure like this. And as we talk about improving those things, or as we talk with the board about making these things better over time, and we think about, you know, adding things or taking things away, these diagrams are helpful for communication, and they also help us think about, you know, kind of the unintended consequences of making changes. In addition to these diagrams, there are more sort of technical diagrams for every system, including all of our switches, all of our IDFs, our MDFs, all of our network operations center, really everything that we would describe as backbone, that, you know, all of the devices that we use and all of the technology we use sit on. And so, and I didn't share any images of those because they have IP addresses and other things attached to them, and I just didn't want to give everybody that information publicly. Next slide. So the next goal was developing long-term budgets for device and school technology and replacement, along with maintenance of effort. And part of that, there's two, I have this divided up into two goals because some of this has to do with how we, as a department, operationally work and what it takes to make that happen, and then what parts are really related to the bond. And I've talked to you before about the long-term projections of how we're going to make those dollars stretch. And so I'm going to talk to you first about the operational piece, and then I'll talk to you about the bond piece. So in this particular slide, you can see that we had a lot of activities this year related to the relocating or the removal of the 24 portables, the deployment of devices to students and staff across the district, and the opening of B1 and B2. And so that's captured here, and that's why those things say 100% complete because we had them done. Most of those things were done by October. Next slide, please. So just, these are just some examples. So when the village was moved, I met with Pam's team, with Lance, and also with Ken Haas. We went through every single portable. We photographed every single thing in every single portable that was related to technology. I put it in a slide deck. I shared it with that team so that when the portables went to, when we went to move the portables, we were sure that the equipment that belonged to us, we knew what it was, we knew what was there, and we knew that we could, you know, retrieve it and store it so that we didn't lose anything. We also had to look at, go to the next slide. We also had to look at what was in the portable that we needed, portables that teachers were using that needed to be kept or removed. And so we identified things that we were going to keep. We identified things that we needed to remove. And I specified what IT would take care of. We specified what facilities would take care of. This is just kind of our working document. Go ahead. You've approved several e-waste items, and I want to tell you that, you know, just think about the closets you have at home and, you know, how quickly they get full. And we had about five years' worth of closets in different places across the district full of old equipment that needed to be e-wasted. But before we could e-waste it, we needed to make sure that we knew what we had, and we needed to make sure that we took it out of inventory, and all of those things that we needed to do. But this is just an example of, you know, like a couple of locations where we had stuff that needed to be, that needed to be taken out of circulation and removed. We also added new workstations to lots of classrooms. This is a picture of the photography class at BBMS. And you can see that we put in new all-in-one computers on each of those workstations, and every student can go in. They can use Photoshop, just like professional photographers do, and really hone their skills. And that carries right up to the high school, where we added devices like that, along with laptops, to the art, photography, journalism, fashion design, architecture, and graphic design classrooms. We also added those devices to the robotics lab here at the high school, and we refreshed the BBMS library with devices. And most school offices and district office people got new devices as well because everything was at end of life. So we got, we put out a lot of new stuff. And then we set up a help desk in the new media center here at the high school so students can come in and get assistance during the day with their devices. Go ahead. And we've really, you know, once you get rid of old things, you want to make sure that new things are properly inventoried and that we have a process for circulating them. And so you can see that we've organized, this is an example of how techs at the sites are organizing their spaces to make sure that we know what we have and that we know what belongs to who, and that we're keeping track of things. The other thing I just would show you here is, this is a slide that shows kind of how we manage inventory. So we spent the whole, really, this was something I was deeply involved in because you don't want to lose things that you spend public money on, ever. And so we needed to get everything we owned, device-wise in particular, because they're traveling all over the place, into inventory. And when COVID happened, a lot of devices went out very quickly, and we had to spend a lot of time just making sure that everything that we owned, we could account for. And so this is our inventory management system. It's called SISAD. We have all of our devices in there. We have them assigned to students. And we also, this SISAD also is our help desk. This is where people go when they need to open a ticket. And so we can manage the whole lifecycle of every device in SISAD, and this is what we use it for. And that's why I wanted to make sure our inventory was, our inventory system was really, you know, was really up to par. And this is just, this is what the help desk ticketing system looks like. All the tickets go there. Bobby, who you met in that first little video, looks at that every day. He makes sure that the tickets are assigned where they need to go, and then the techs track them at their sites and make sure that they document what they're doing. So if you ever ask, or anyone ever asks, what are your techs doing? How are they doing it? How much time are they spending on this or that? We can tell you because we have tickets that you can see and look at. Go ahead. And then this is how we manage devices. We have something called Azure, Active Directory, and we can see not just what, where the devices are in our inventory, but we can see where they are in real time, how they're logging in, what updates they have, what updates they need. And we can then push updates out to devices as needed. Okay, so the third and final goal that I wanted to share with you this evening. Let me get to it. I wrote a script just so I could go off the script a little bit, and now I have to find myself again, is goal three, developing multi-year measure BH projections. And again, in this, there is some IT operations and position control, so I didn't give you accurate information. I did combine those two, all the budgeting pieces in the last slide. So the next, several slides will provide some examples of how we're going about that. So if we look at, go ahead to the next slide. This slide shows the projections for measure BH expenditures over the next four years. The budgeted figures are based on current and anticipated projects. I want to note for the board that this is something that I update quarterly. For example, you can see the Horace Mann Theater refreshes on the list of anticipated expenditures. We expect the total cost of that project to be around $450,000 to replace sound, AV equipment, and lighting. Infrastructure costs are for network equipment that we know will need to replace, such as switches, access points, UPS power systems. And we recently just did a complete inventory of all of those things, and we put them on a lifecycle. We know what year we have to replace, what item, and how much it's going to cost. When I update this again at the end of June, I need to add the BBMS theater to the project list. It hasn't been added to this view because we haven't established a scope of work or projected cost yet. We know it's probably going to cost something similar to the Horace Mann Theater because it's a similar space. But we can assume for this, so I'm assuming for this presentation that replacement costs will be similar. And when I update this in June, it'll be reflected in this. At a high level, the board should note that as of 3/28/22, there was about $10 million left in the technology replacement portion of measure BH out of the initial $13.8 million. Based on the project assumptions in this table, there will be between $5 and $5.5 million left in the bond at the end of fiscal year 24/25, which means there should be enough money for devices and classrooms in the out years, at least three, maybe even four of the out years. Some of you have asked what happens when bond funds are depleted. And short of passing another bond that includes funding for technology, the district really should think about putting away, I calculated about $1.4 million per year in what I'm calling a technology-deferred maintenance fund, just like we do for buildings, to ensure that once the bond monies are expended, the technology programs and infrastructure can be maintained as currently committed to. Do you want to ask a question? Well, the sooner you start, the better. So, but I would say, I would say if not in this coming fiscal year, the following fiscal year. I will also note that devices for staff and employees are between, about, I like to tell people this because it kind of puts it, lots of money in perspective. We spend about $250 to $283 per year, per person, based on the assumption that we have a three-to-four lifecycle on the device. So that's actually pretty good, you know, that's a pretty good use of funds for something that is being used every day by students and staff. Devices include classroom equipment, such as visonic displays, document cameras, and AV systems, and they're dependent on infrastructure. All of that requires maintenance and support, which is why that budgeting piece is so important and why I wanted to make sure that I gave you the most accurate information I possibly could. What you're looking at there on this slide is just a draft of the IT operational budget. And I know it's kind of small. It's really not meant for information. It's more meant to just describe the process. So I work with the fiscal services team to develop the worksheet, which contains all of the operational expense and position control for the IT department. So for fiscal year 22/23, the cost for position control, which is staff, and all of the IT operations is going to be about $1.7 million. That's up about 7% over last year's budget. Some of that is because there are going to be some additional expenses related to security. Some of it's because, you know, all of the vendors are increasing their contract amounts between 3% and 10%, depending on the vendor, just post-COVID and with all of the issues that have happened with supply chains and, you know, you know, just economic pressure, inflation. And then what I do is I take those contracts, I put the dates on my worksheet so I know when they're due. And then I move that over into a worksheet that I'm going to give my successor. So all the budget, all the bond, all the board items, everything that's going to be renewed is already scheduled. The board items will be ready. The rationales are there. I'll give you a copy so you have a reference to look at, and you'll know, yes, it was budgeted for, and here's why. And, you know, again, once the budget process is complete, I'll share all this with you as a document so that you have a copy of it. And then finally, I just want to show you kind of the process, you know, $450,000, wow, that's a lot of money for a theater. Why? You know, because somebody's going to ask that question. It's a fancy theater. We put fancy stuff in our schools. And so we hired Darren Dorsel to do, you know, he's not a vendor. He's someone who consults. He's very technical. He knows this stuff. And he really is there to represent our interests. And he, he really is there to represent our interest and needs. So we did a, we did a, you know, an assessment, what do we need in that theater? And then he's completed that work, that's how we got the budget amount so that we kind of know what to think about. And then the next phase, which I need to bring to you, but I want to front-load it for you so you know, is that we have to do, we have to do a, you know, we need to replace the sound, we need to replace the video, the lighting, which is, just the lighting alone is about $179,000. And then there's some controls and automation inside the auditorium. And one of the, one of the things that we said to him is, this needs to be user-friendly and it needs to live seven to 10 years in that space. Next slide. That translates into a project plan that, that we need to do next. So we, so consider that last slide a phase one. Phase two would be to put together a project plan, to design the project specifically enough so that when we go out for an RFP, contractors know what we need and want. And then to ask for, ask for, for bids so that we can, so that we can determine whether we can really, A, whether our assumptions about costs and needs are correct, whether somebody has a better idea. And then do we want to do all of it? Do we want to stage it? Do we want to, do we want to do it over a longer period of time? But we're going to start with the assumption that we're going to try to get it done in the next fiscal year. And then the final slide sort of shows the milestones. And so you can see that, you know, it's going to take about, it's going to take about eight and, let's see, 15 weeks or so to just get to the bid process and, and select someone. And then it's going to take, you know, another, you know, 17 weeks to complete the project. So if we start, if we stay on track with this project timeline, I'm, I'm glad to report to you that we're not behind yet. If we stay on track with this project timeline, we would have a fully operational theater at Horace Mann by the end of November. So again, getting to coherence and focus through good governance, through fiscal stability, and through communication. I just want to say, it has been a highlight of my career to be in Beverly Hills. I have enjoyed it more than I can tell you. And I am very thankful to have had an opportunity to work with Dr. Bregge and the leadership team, with the board, and I really appreciate the support that you've provided and your, your, your attention. And so I'm open to any questions you have or any comments at this time.
Would you like to start, Rochelle?
Where does one start on a report like that? So comprehensive, so complete, so outstanding. It really reflects the work of our wonderful IT department. And I'm going to be missing David because, as he heard, whenever I screamed help, he was right there for me in spite of everything else. I, I just can't get over the completeness of this report, the objectives, the way that you presented it, it's amazing. I just only hope, the one thing, that the costs of things don't escalate more than your estimates of what you think they're going to cost. Because that's the only thing that scares me, and I'm sure it scares you. But I, we're going to miss you, David. You've been quite an asset for us throughout the last few years that you've been, since you've been here. And I tell you, I don't know who can fill those shoes. I don't, they're going to be very, very difficult.
When I met her today, she's going to be awesome. She's going to be awesome.
Did you show her all the work that we have left to do? Did you show her all the work that we have to do?
We're going to do that on May 10. We're going to do that on May 10.
Well, thank you very much, David. It's a, a complete report, and I'm thrilled to see that our IT department has been in such great hands.
Thanks.
Thank you. Also very much appreciate the report. I was looking at page seven, and this is something we've looked at before, but just the, you know, the honesty, the transparency in terms of where we are, in terms of our capabilities, holding up a mirror to yourself as a department or as a person is never fun or easy, but you, you know, that's what we need to do to continue to improve the program. So I really appreciate it. I also appreciate just the planning ahead for the useful life of all of the equipment that we have in the school district. I think the, the suggestion of having a fund for that purpose makes a lot of sense. A couple of questions. I guess these two are related. When we talk about like the out-of-pocket cost, so I'm looking at page 24. Pull that up. Cool. So when we're, so, so when we have these totals, do we take into account at all what we think like the residual value of the technology that we're replacing is? Is that like net or are, or, or, or if there is a residual value to the equipment at that point, it's just a bonus?
We really, we really use it until it's dead or mostly dead. We really try to get as much life out of it as we can. Now, we did get, remember the iPads that we, we, we sold back? Those things hold value. So we got $53,000 for those, and that, that will go back into measure BH to support the, you know, to support the effort. We got about $6,000 for all the other devices. It was basically a scrap, you know, kind of a, a cost for scrap. And, you know, I, it's better than nothing. But, you know, we really do use it until it's, we, we try to use it. So for example, we're replacing 15 Vusonic boards at BV because they need a newer model for the teachers to do what they need to do, which means we're going to take out 15 that still have a life for something. We just have to figure out what they're going to do. So I know that, for example, the middle school cafeteria wants one that they can display the menu on. And so we'll find, we try to find places for the older equipment that, that maybe won't work where, where we need it, but may work somewhere else for some other purpose. But at some point, we just have to sort of, you know, do what my mother doesn't like to do, which is downsize a little bit and, and, you know, get rid of all of the treasures that, that she just can't let go of. So I guess I'm thanking my mother for being, for being someone who thinks about these things because I don't like clutter. So to answer your question, there's not a lot of residual value.
Right, so we're not, so we're not building that into these budgets.
No, no. But I am using projected enrollment and other, you know, real data to come up with those numbers so that, you know, so that I'm not just kind of, and I am, I am anticipating some, some inflation in the, in the cost when I put those numbers together specifically for devices. Because it's a big piece of that.
Isn't inflation just a Putin, a price hike? That's what I heard. I heard there's no inflation. It's a joke. That's not. I'll, I'll save my political commentary for later. One other question. So when we had like the picture of like the e-waste, for example, so we're assuming we're not going to get any value for those. So what do we actually do with it? Do we just, do we just recycle all that old equipment?
Yeah, the, Ken actually, we need to bring it to you first to give us approval. And then Ken has a guy that comes and picks it all up. And, and we do get a check, we get a little check for all that stuff. So all that e-waste that we did right around the new year netted us about, I think it was, I think it was $6,800 was the total debt. And that, and again, that goes back into money that we used to repair devices we have now. So, but this is just the cost of what, what, what we're going to spend out of pocket for new stuff, because really that's what you use bond money for.
I guess one, one, one thing to think about would be if, if we're not expecting to get that much from that computers, it might be a really cool project to actually let the students like dismantle the computers and do like a lesson over how the inside of a computer works. I don't know, might be kind of fun.
Some, some do, actually, right now.
Plans are not planned.
We collect those costs, though.
You'd be amazed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, such an impressive report. I mean, it's like a publishable book. I mean, it's, I mean, it looks great and it's amazingly efficient and everything that you lay out and there's no, nothing, no piece of information left unmentioned. What I want to ask you is, I mean, we have all experienced, I think, as consumers, the delay because of the, what is it called? The supply chain. So have you allowed for that when you look at times and deliverables? Have you allowed for that? Or let me ask you, have you found that it has not been an issue? In terms of, I mean, because there's a lot of deliverables here and things that you expect to come in, shipments, and has that been an issue?
No, it's an issue. So one of the reasons I brought the sixth grade devices to you last month or earlier this month was because I was worried that if we didn't order them now, we might not have them in time for the beginning of the school year. Even though they're saying those devices are not in, experience, we're not experiencing supply chain issues. It's been my experience this year that we've had delays with things that we needed and it's, and it's taking more time than we expected for them to come. So yes, I did, I didn't build those into that part, but, but when we, when we map out how we're going to do things, we've been backing everything up to make sure that we have enough time to get them when we need them. And the vendors are being pretty good about letting us know. And sometimes they'll say, this one's going to take longer, do you want this or do you want that? And then we make that decision.
And have you found anything related to these microchips are just simply not coming? Like they'll say, you know, on back order and, you know, we don't know exactly when we expect to have?
We, we haven't had anything kind of core to our operation that, that has, has, has been presented in that way. One of the things that we did when we talked about the Horace Mann Theater was making sure that we're, we're scoping equipment, like Dennis was, or Darren was working really hard to scope equipment that we thought would not be delayed. But when we get further down the line on that project, we're going to have to make decisions like that. Because we know that some items are probably going to be, you know, there are, there are items that are six or seven or eight months out still. Most of them are Ferraris, we're not ordering those. But, but we try to, we, we're working hard with the vendors to make sure that we, that we are knowledgeable about something before we order it, especially if it impacts the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. No, no matter how much we compliment you, I don't think you're going to stay. So I'm not going to say anything, although we haven't hired technically your replacement yet. Sorry, he, well, I'll hit a horse man first because you have that up there. Do we know out of that 15 weeks construction time, how much of the, is the auditorium closed for that entire time?
I would say probably for at least 10 to 12 of those weeks, it'll be offline. It, it may not be closed, closed, you know, they, they may be able to use it for, you know, some meetings, but, but it won't be usable for theater space. The stage won't be usable.
So I think it would be important in the world of communications that we, as soon as we get to that stage, like at least warn everybody upfront.
Right. And, and a lot of that is just doing a lot of our scheduling and planning for next year now.
And, and for BV, you had mentioned BV, I know it's on the report. What is the thoughts on that? Is that going to happen after Horace Mann is completed?
We probably should start the discovery part of it before we start Horace Mann because we can do that now and we can then get a, a real accurate picture of what that cost is going to look like to replace the equipment there so that we can update that table, you know, to, to reflect the actual cost. So I, I would, I would propose that we bring another, I just would bring another item to you before the end of the school year to have Darren do that work.
Okay. I, I would, yeah, I, I wonder if there's value in securing, if we're going to have similar scopes of work at both places, if there's value in getting this, putting them together.
Yeah, there might be, yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know if we can lose that much auditorium space, that much time, but, you know, it's just a thought. The other question I have is, for the budget, where you say there might be five to five and a half million left at the bond at the end of 24/25, we are going to have to put to start budgeting annually for this technology deferred maintenance. Does it do us any good to start that sooner and to start pulling the money out of the general fund and, and leave the bond money, which may be able to go towards other things?
That's a weight question, but I, I would say the sooner the better. You know, that you, you might be able to, you know, I, I think we need to do more work, more, more precise work for you to, to tell you exactly what that would look like. But yes, it's, the sooner the better.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mary, can I ask one more question quick before you start? I forgot one thing. The $465,000, is that coming from the bond issue or is that going to be out of the general fund? Was that planned for?
For the theater?
For the theater, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that will come out of the bond. So I did plan for the theater, but I didn't plan for that much for the theater. So I, but, you know, we, I, I think that, and it may not, it may not come in that high, that, that's, that's the high, that's kind of like, I'm giving you the high number because I, I don't know what the real number is going to be until we go out for an RFP.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for this update. It's just, it's like the model of professionalism. I can't, I can't thank you enough. It's really perfect in so many ways. And it's answered so many questions. And I really appreciate you giving us the number for the future and planning for the future because that was one of my questions and I was really worried about. So it's nice to have that so that we can start planning for that for when we don't have the bond funds. I, I had one question about just the systems that we have in place at the different schools. Is there parity in, in the systems that, that we have?
Yeah, there, there really is. I mean, we, for example, we've upgraded all the fiber at all the schools, even Hawthorne. And so that, that's a big deal because it, it helps everything work better. We have older equipment at some schools. And, and so in that schedule of replacing access points and switches, we've, we've prioritized the older equipment first to be replaced before, you know, obviously before the newer equipment. So you're always going to have kind of a, a range of age of equipment as, as you go through projects and as, as, you know, because you're not putting it all in at the same time. But, but in, in, in terms of parity and, and equity, yes, I would say that we have really good equipment everywhere and that, that people are, are, you know, we don't have schools where something is really substandard.
Terrific. I don't think that we would have, we would have fared as well as we did during COVID if not for you. So I can't thank you enough for all of the work that you've done for this district and how well you've set us up for the future. I, we are so fortunate to have had you and for all of this work. So thank you so much. I, I just, I can't thank you enough. This is just really wonderful and, and for your team as well.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing them, they're amazing. I've, I've been really lucky to have a great team. And again, it's been a great experience, so thank you all. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to thank David for his report. And I want to just kind of wrap up with that, you know, the strategic plan is, is really a story about the journey of our school district. And, you know, there's no doubt that, you know, life is different. Our workplace is different, the needs are different. And, and what's absolutely astonishing is that looking at our journey with our strategic plan, you're going to hear different stories about being able to meet our goals in some areas and not being able to meet our goals in a different area. Because our school district is in a different place than we could have ever imagined. In some ways, I feel like we're ahead. Some other areas, there's some, some deficit areas that we couldn't have planned. So you're going to hear this story of some setbacks, some challenges, and some areas where we've really persevered. But what is absolutely astonishing is that the one department that, that we have leaned on more than any other department that has a skeleton crew, has, has told a story this evening about the successes that we have. Being in the district for almost six years, I can tell you, we have never, we've always been able to get things out and we, we, we've been able to buy things and, and have resources. But we've never been able to get ahead and be able to organize and systemize things and look at the asset control and, and to create really new systems with sustainable supports. And we're there now. And so, and while this is incredibly sad and, and, and we're not even going to talk about it because you're still going to be here for a while, you still, there's a lot of work to be done. It, it, just to look at this legacy, you know, if, if, if I'm following somebody in their line of work, I want to follow David Damico. And this story tonight is just evidence of what we've asked him to do for our school district that will be long-lasting into the future. So thank you, David.
I agree. I just can't thank you enough, David. This is just, it's so detailed and you've just hit every single mark. It's just really, it's incredible. It's really incredible. Does anyone else have any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you again. The next, next report we're going to, we'll hear from tonight is from Pam. Pam Johnson will give us a report from the bond manager.
So I know Dr. Bregge said that he would really like to follow David Damico. I'm telling you, I'm not happy about it at all. So tonight we have a So tonight we have a, there's a kind of a lengthy report. I'm not going to go through all of these photos. What I'm going to do is just tell you what we've tried to do in this um, update. So when you have time to look through it, you'll know what we're trying to convey. So um, Rebecca, if you could just go to page four. All right, so here's an example of the update that was in, um, what was posted on March twenty-second. And then we put in red what's new, so when you look through, you can see that progression. And then if you skip all the way to page twenty-six, so lots of photos of, and there's a narrative that goes with each project. And there are captions under each photo, so I think it's pretty well um, self-explanatory. But if, okay, here's page twenty-six. So when we could find photos of um, the same ceiling in this um, shot and kind of from the same angle, so you'll see the one on the left was March twenty-second and then you can see the progress. Um, this was, now it's probably a couple of weeks ago, because by the time we put it together and make the agenda, it's already two weeks past that. And then if you'd go, Rebecca, all the way to page forty-three. And you won't always see the side by sides, because especially for the oil well, we have a lot of um, new photos. But everything in red uh, is, is new. Okay, right there. So here's a before and after, the same shot. You can see this large um, vessel that was there and, and now it's gone. So because uh, you're dealing with the program representative, program side representative tonight, I'm gonna spend my time on the numbers and the financial part. So if you go to page forty-seven. All right, and now forty-eight, excellent. Uh, this is a report that you've seen often. This is the uh, part of what goes to the CBOC every time we meet. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is tiny. I just wanna point out a, a couple of things on this. So if you do uh, wanna take a look at it, um, you're oriented. Every, the green bars indicate that this measure E, that's, and if you would go, and then each of the line items is a, a goal, which is an accounting word for a project. And then the first uh, column is the current budget. And the second column is what we call commitments, which means you've actually authorized contracts. And then the expenditures are next, and then what's uh, remaining on the budget balance. Okay, now, um, if we go, Rebecca, just keep scrolling until you see blue. That's about there. Okay, now, now we turn to uh, BH, same information. Okay, next slide, please. All right, um, the, what I'd like to point out on this one is if you look down, if you can see on the third line down, it says, there are the numbers at the left, nine-one-six-oh-eight, and then it says Beverly Hills High School, Building C. And you'll see in the budget column, a hundred and five million. So I want you just to remember that for a little while as we go through. And then, uh, next one, Rebecca, if we go to page fifty-five. Okay, right here, if this were large enough, this, I would just like to show you what David was talking about. And here's where you can verify his numbers, because if you look at his, the budget, there's two columns for technology, or two rows for technology. One says eleven point one million and the other one is two point eight and some change. And then you look to the right and the next one is a project commitment. And I just said that that commitment column is for contracts you have already authorized. That's true, except for technology. We have moved all of the technology money into commitments, so that it is reserved, so that it won't be um, taken for something else. And, but his expenditures, when he said he has about ten million left, you can see that he spent um, about four million out of his thirteen point eight, so it's very close. So that's how you can use this report. Okay, next slide, please, Rebecca. All right, this, Mr. Halimi, these are slides for you. Um, a couple of meetings ago, you told me that you really appreciated Wade's presentations. So I've worked with Wade and we have come up with some, some ways to display uh, the bond revenue in a pie chart. Next slide, please. Um, and this one is for BH, next one. And then these are the expenses that we've tried, that we've broken out in a pie chart. Next one, Rebecca. Um, this one, we, we mimicked what Wade had done with some of his expenditures to give a, uh, some idea of how the money's been spent. Okay, next one, Rebecca. So here's the same thing for BH. Okay, next one. And we did this as well. All right. Now, if you would go to the next slide, please, Rebecca. Okay, I don't know why that's jumped over like that. Okay, the numbers that um, are on these slides are a little different, which might passing the show. Then um, then the ones that was attached to the agenda, and that's because in the last few days, uh, we have gotten new information, cause of the bond sales and we have uh, better uh, projections on the interest. So I wanted you to have the uh, latest information. Also, you know, we talk about the market uh, not supporting our budgets. We talk about encumbrances versus commitments and we talk about budgets versus expenditures and it gets kinda all wound up um, in accounting lingo. So what I'm, what I've tried to do here is to find a way to present the numbers um, that will give the board more clarity and making decisions. So we have revised the budgets, so that for any project uh, for which the board has not approved contracts, we have decreased that to costs incurred. So remember the hundred and five million that you saw on that one slide for Building C? We're reducing that budget by a hundred two million, what, five forty-six, five eleven, uh, because there's already been the difference between a hundred and five and a hundred and two spent on that for design. South site, same thing, reduced it to cost incurred. The legacy wells, reduced it. And the MTA oil wells, uh, we've reduced it. And then we have increased budgets based on board approvals. So the final uh, PGMP that you approved on the twenty-second, it was for twenty-three million. Um, we only had to increase the budget by that eight point four million, because we had already um, anticipated that there would be some expense. Then we have added the cost to complete of twelve million. El Rodeo, same thing, um, the cost to complete is nine point nine, but we already had a four million dollars um, in there that we had anticipated for furniture. So we just needed to increase it by five point nine. Uh, the Vinoco restoration, three hundred and twelve. And then facilities and planning to December of twenty-twenty-four, uh, cost to complete of four point two. So that gives you a new budget number uh, of three hundred, three hundred and sixteen million, five seventy-six to, two oh seven. So before, if you looked at your financials, it looks like you had more expenses for projects, more anticipated expenses than you have money. You're gonna look at it now and it's going to show you, um, next slide, next slide, please. Okay, I don't know why those are all, why they're not aligned, but we'll live with that. Okay, so um, the revenue in BH, uh, this is now that we've sold, you've sold the rest of the bonds. Um, and there was a five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cost of sale to do that. So we've reduced the revenue by that amount. Um, projected additional revenue, we had it at twenty million, five hundred thousand. We've reduced that now, because the interest projections have come in less. Then we've taken the adjusted budget that I just showed you, which shows that you have a balance remaining for your decisions of eighty-nine million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And I'm, I'm hoping that you will agree that that's an easier way to look at it um, than the other way. All right, next slide, please. This, we've done it, we're gonna get to the same number. It's just a different way to get there. Is that we have taken um, the financial data, that's just not showing up at all, the way it's looks. I don't know why. But. No, this one, it's the one, well, the board has the copy, so we'll, we'll just follow along. But um, yeah, it's showing nothing under. Just all looks, okay, I see it just all should be moved over. I don't know why. Anyway, we'll just go through it if you don't mind from the, from the copies that I gave you. Uh, so another way to get to the same number, this way, but instead of using budgets, we're using revenue minus actual commitments, which gets you to the hundred and sixteen million. And then, next page, please. And then the um, estimated cost to complete, which was fifty-nine million dollars uh, when we reported on three twenty-two. It is now reduced to twenty-six million, four twelve. Not that anything's gone down, it's just that costs had, because based on your approvals, have moved from cost to complete to commitments. Thank you. There you go. That's better, much better. Okay.
Can you say cost to complete, the cost to complete, the things that we've already started?
Yes, yes.
Is the utilities in here?
Yes.
So.
Here, just a minute. Okay, just, let me get back to where we are. The utilities are not a cost to complete, because you've already authorized it. The thirteen-five, it's in committed.
But El Rodeo's in there.
Mm-hmm.
And under the same rationale, we've committed to that as well.
Right, but the, um, this is, um, on El Rodeo, there's a cost to complete that you have not approved yet. They haven't come to you. These are estimated costs to get you to the end of that project. On the utilities, you've already authorized the total. So there is no additional cost to complete.
So this is additional cost for projects we've already started?
Yes.
That we haven't approved, that's.
Yes. For instance, the um, under El Rodeo, you see the F, F and E, that's estimated five million dollars for the furniture. Yeah, for the furniture, uh, and it may come in less than that, you know, hopefully it won't come in more. The HMC true-up is an item that you approved on the twenty-second and it is their additional fee based on the to, um, final cost, hard cost of the project. So you can see it was estimated at four point four. You approved it on the twenty-second for four million, four forty-nine, five sixteen. It's, it is approved um, and moved into commitments. That's why it's in italics and it's not in the, if you add it up, it's not in there anymore. That was just for your information, so uh, you could follow.
So, um, Pam, quick question, I'm sorry.
That's right.
If I may, um, on the last page, the estimated funds available for board decisions?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really looking at, you take the ten percent contingency out, so we're looking at about eighty-seven million?
And that should, that should.
And that's, and for that, we're, we are referring, when we say board decisions, retaining walls, Building C, site work.
Yes.
That's correct, right?
Correct, and legacy wells.
Legacy wells, thank you.
Whatever else, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that got us to the last slide. Thank you, Mr. Margul. So, and it's, again, it's the same number, the eighty-nine million, five eighty-nine, three seventy-nine that I showed you on a pre, on the first slide, where we did it um, by reducing the budgets. So what we're going to do now is um, each time we bring you an item for your authorization, uh, we will reduce this amount, so you can, as you reset, um, you will have the um, information every time you make a decision. So it's eighty-nine million today. If we bring you something for three hundred thousand, um, next board meeting, we will reduce this and tell you what's left.
Where does the cost for um, all the, like, security and consulting, that's all within, considered within the budget?
Yes, those are all in expenditures. It's already been expended. There is nothing going forward.
So that's just going to stay within that budgeted number?
Yes.
Is it the same with the, the remaining consultants?
What consultants?
DLR or any other consultants?
Oh, not necessarily.
Okay. On this, on the assigned project, so?
No, there will still be true-ups.
Okay.
Um, Pam, on, on, on the um, list of the estimated project and expenditures, is the, where are the um, retaining walls under? Is that under site? Was that, is that included under site or is it somewhere else?
Yes, south side.
Okay, so the south side includes the retaining walls and the site work?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just, and then the van, legacy wells are still twenty, what?
When you say the site work, that um, the retaining walls, that's all of the retaining walls?
Yes.
And how much have we spent so far on the site work, the south side?
Uh, let's, thank you, page fifty-four. Can we go back to that? Here, I've got it here too, I think. Okay, so as of March fifteenth, we had spent twenty-three million, four twenty-three, five eighty-nine. So that's, just broadly, that's the thirteen-five, thirteen million, five hundred for the underground. It is the five and a half million for DLR's design and then other costs.
And the legacy wells or the orphan wells, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the legacy wells, uh, we have spent four hundred and eighty-nine, that's four hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars as of March fifteenth.
What's the MTA oil wells?
Those were the ones that were hit.
Right, but isn't that work completed?
Yes, but it still stays in the, it stays forever.
Right, but the three oh six, I'm just confused by what's left on that.
Yeah, that, that, Mr. Roach can try and explain for you. Um, yeah, it was just money that uh, we didn't need and went, is going back. So we reduced, we reduced the MTA oil wells from, we had three hundred fifty-six thousand left and we only needed forty-nine. So we were able to reduce it by the three hundred and two.
I have one question and I'm, I, I'm looking at the um, the amount of money that uh, that's estimated for the board to make decisions on is eighty-nine, five eighty-nine. And I remember that in the, and that is money that would be left over after everything is supposedly that, I don't know what's been removed, but I remember the number one twenty-nine at that point. How is it possible that uh, that forty million dollars are not there anymore?
Okay, very different numbers. The one twenty-nine that you're remembering was the anticipated shortfall. If you did all the projects and you didn't um, authorize them until twenty-twenty-four. So that was one number. So that one's kind of not relevant anymore? Because that's, um, that was just a, a number in time.
So whatever we need to get done, well, we have right now, and that number is higher than that, right? In other words, the number to complete everything that the bond addressed, we don't really have that amount. All we have is this number left now, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, yes, that's why I thought this was a clearer way to present it.
So Rochelle, I did a little quick math from the list of the projects to answer what you're asking and I got about a hundred and ninety-one million to complete all of those projects that are not approved.
I didn't get a chance to do that yet.
Yeah, is that, does that sound about right? Uh, well, I took whatever, uh.
I thought it was around a hundred and eighty-seven originally, or when I saw it.
Whatever numbers were listed here.
So our, our, okay. Um.
Yeah, it's not here now.
Pam, thank you for this report. I do appreciate how you've broken it out. This is, this has been a lot more helpful for me to understand kinda where we are in the project, how much we have left, so thank you. I guess for Noah and Pam, what, so the number that you were just calculating, I, I guess what I don't see clearly broken out that would be helpful is like, what was de-scoped to get us to uh, that eighty-nine million dollar number? Because we, it was gonna cost us a hundred and twenty-nine if we approved it, you know, to years from now. I get that that number can move if we approve it sooner.
That's not what it would cost us. That's how much we would have been short, just so.
Sorry, yes, yes. That's how much it would have been short. So in order to get to eighty-nine million dollars that we have at our discretion now, a number of things would have. a number of things would have had to been, to de-scope, you started making, I think, a list of those, we said the retaining walls, building C, uh, at the site work.
So, let me, let me qualify this one, because this might help, so we finish, let's say we finish B three, B four, El Rodeo and the trenching, okay, and do nothing else. Then you have eighty-nine million left.
Is that right, we're, we're on the same page?
Then what you still have to do is building C, the site work, the retaining walls, and the legacy wells. MNO, is it, um, the MNO number, what is, what is that?
MNO has been gone for a long time, alright, so the MNO has been off the budget for three years.
You mean locating MNO, is that, is that what you're saying, like, where we're gonna locate them? Yeah, we, there's no, we have no idea what we're doing with it, so you, it's really kind of hard to budget it, but, but I, I understand. Right. Um, anyway, so does that, does that help?
Yeah, so that, so, so those thing, if, if we added those back, those would cost a hundred and ninety-one million at our current estimate roughly. Okay, now we, now we have an understanding.
And the reason also, um, that I presented it this way is that we're working on estimates, right? All of those budgets are just estimates, and in this market, that is so crazy, I thought it was better just to take those estimates out now, and then when you, if, when you decide to go forward with it, then you'll get the actual numbers, and then you'll know.
Rochelle, were you finished, because?
Yes, I was.
Okay, I just, I had one more question.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So, so, um, the, I guess what I would like to, and thank you for the presentation, um, Pam. What I would like to say to my colleagues is we need to have a study session ASAP to figure out our direction, um, the board needs to make decisions.
That was what I had said earlier tonight, when they agreed that master plan.
I hope my colleagues will concur that we can have a study session, it actually, it has to be with Wade, um, it can't be with, with anybody from TCDS by law, they're not allowed to be there. Um, and we have to discuss how we're gonna either fund the future projects or not fund the future projects, but we have to make a decision, so.
Well, why can't we have that conversation with TCDS?
They're, um, it's again, it's against the law, correct? It's against the law. Benefit from.
Got it, understood, okay, well, I, I, I would, I would concur that this is worth having a study session over and digging into.
Alright, so hopefully Dr. Bregy can do that, thank you. I, I don't mind at all.
I had a question for you, um, or I, it's probably really for the board, um, I know that we had it, um, an email from TC, TCDS and an email from Pro West about getting, um, bid, a future bid from them for retaining wall number five. And so I think, given the status of, um, that retaining wall, uh, from the water breaks that we had over at that area, and, um, I guess my question is, is if they can do retaining wall number five, um, separate from the other ones, if it can be done with the work that they were referring to and doing this summer, um, it, I think it would be wise for us to, um, to talk about that.
If the direction of the board is for us to develop that for you, we can do that.
So, we're giving direction on moving forward with retaining wall five?
Bring back a package.
For retaining wall five, because I think, did you read the letter from Pro West?
Yeah, I read both letters, I also daily see the scaffolding on the side of Olympic and realize that we have a risk issue.
Yeah, I think we should look at it. I mean, I haven't seen the numbers, have you seen the, did they give you numbers yet for retaining wall five?
Okay, so, yeah, I would concur with that direction.
I mean, at least have a conversation about it, um, and see if it's something that's feasible at this time, but I would like to move on that if we can.
Okay.
Do you guys agree? It sounded like it was an efficient thing to do. Okay.
And, do you want to also have us bring back, um, information on the bridge?
Yeah, I think we were waiting to hear about the.
Yeah, I thought we were getting information.
We were waiting to hear if it, it has to be done, from a, uh, earthquake standpoint.
It's not an earthquake, my understanding is that it has to, it's a DSA requirement to be done in order to get closeout on B three, because it has to do with the egress from the auditorium, second floor auditorium.
So it's a, it's a.
So is it not mandatory from a earthquake standpoint, because that was the information?
Well, DSA, if it's, then it would be mandatory, yes, because.
Because DSA.
Had you heard that before?
About the seismic issue, yes, I have, early on.
We were asking if we could get confirmation about the seismic issue.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, I think DSA could easily chime in on that, right?
We was gonna look into that, okay, thank you, thank you Pam, and thank you for the report.
So, sorry, just one question about the updates, actually, on page twenty-two, there was an update about, uh, El Rodeo. In March, we estimated it was forty-four percent done, now we're saying forty-five percent done, it's about one percent. I've gotten questions from a lot of community members that are kind of like asking about what is going on with El Rodeo, are we really progressing? Not seeing a lot of movement there, it, uh, to this is not me, this is secondhand with videos and whatnot, so, could you just comment? Because one percent in a month, at that rate, we were, you know, you know, four or five years out, so.
There's a lot of movement going on inside the building, I've seen the videos too, um, and this is a forty-five percent, or that percentage is on the total project, some of the buildings are way ahead. And what I'm wondering, it might be worth having the project manager, Griselda Perez, from El Rodeo, come and give you a, a live update. Because everything that I'm showing you is two weeks old, by the time we compile it and get it, make the agenda deadline. So if you have an interest in that, we could do that, uh, maybe next week, next board meeting, instead of the overall update.
The, the one thing I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, just from past experience, there's a certain point in the construction where, when they get, when they finish the structural issues, foundation issues, it moves a lot faster. So it may be going slow up to about fifty percent, and then it really starts moving fast, so, like Pam said, there's different sections of the building, and if you look through the photos, you already have drywall up, you have MPCs, and you have all, and then you have some stuff where you're still in the dirt, so you kind of, I guess you kind of average that, and that's why you're forty-five, okay.
You know, some of the buildings are way ahead, if you'll see in the, in the photos, it's, it's very exciting, because it actually look like classrooms.
Appreciate it, Pam.
Um, Pam, going back to your, I mean, I don't have that slide in front of me, but is the, um, F, F, and E for El Rodeo, has that been ordered?
No.
Okay, is there, is it in process?
It is, um, there is a committee, uh, that is made up of, um, Sarah Kaper, uh, some teachers, a, um, a librarian, um, aide, and Kathleen Moore from our staff, and they have met, I think, five times now, and worked through in great detail, um, everything that, uh, they're wanting. HMC is assisting with that, uh, HMC is, uh, putting it into a form, a format that can be presented to Tangram, which is the supplier for pricing, and then once that happens, then it will come to the board for approval.
What is the status for, um, B three and B four for F, F, and E?
Haven't started. Thank you.
Along, along the lines of Mary's question, were there lessons learned from the F, F, and E at Horseman, because we're dealing with elementary school now, that we are carrying into our Rodeo?
Yes, um, the team toured Horseman, uh, they talked with the, with the teachers there to see what they liked and what they didn't like, because as you know, a lot of furniture got stored in the, um, parking garage at Horseman, because they didn't like it after they moved in. So down to little, what, one thing I remember is there are little rocking, little rocking chairs for the three and four-year-olds, and they said, don't get rocking chairs for the five-year-olds, because it's too distracting, uh, that kind of thing, so yes, we did learn that.
Good, okay, excellent.
I have, oops, I'd like to ask just one more question, and just for point of clarification, on the, um, Beverly Hills High School B three and B four, you have a final BGMP of eight million four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, but yet you say cost to complete will be twelve million.
Right.
Is that the difference, I don't?
Okay, so that, that, it's a little bit confusing, because the eight million is what we've added to the budget to cover the twenty-three million dollar final GMP, we had almost fifteen million dollars in the budget already, so when you approve the twenty-three million, from a budget standpoint, we only had to increase the budget by the eight point four million. But then, the twelve million is cost to complete, things that haven't happened yet, it is the furniture, it is, um, the, um, construction management. It's, can be more, um, special consultants, anything that we have estimated that is gonna take twelve million to complete. Over and above anything you've approved, none of that has come to you yet.
So the bridge would be included in that as well?
So we may be looking at something like twenty million to complete then?
Yes, the bridge is not in the cost to complete.
Yeah, 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 the, okay.
Okay.
So, so, wait, sorry, did I hear that right, so the bridge is another thing that kind of got de-scoped, right?
Thank you, I really appreciate.
Any other question?
Alright, thank you Pam, really appreciate it. Okay, the next item is twelve personnel services, uh, may I have an approval?
Oops, again, thank you.
Not gonna do it, not gonna do it.
Approval of agreement for employment of the assistant superintendent, oh, I know why you won't do it. Neither will I, I'm gonna stop, no, I have no choice now, approval of the agreement for employment of an assistant superintendent, business services.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Gabe Halimi, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero.
And reluctantly, I will make a motion to approve the agreement for the employment of the director of in, informational technology service. Nothing against the person that's coming, but.
I will, I will reluctantly, I will reluctantly second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot.
Yeah, I just have one question, Dr. Bregy, um, do we have a, um, a solid transition plan between Wade and David and their successors, um, for after July first?
Um, well, some of the transition will, uh, occur before July first, so, so we, we absolutely do, um, and, and knowing that, uh, both Mr. Roach and Mr. Damico were retiring, they have been preparing for this handoff, so to speak, for quite some time, so they're, um, they've been collecting information, sharing information. Um, so, um, our two, uh, new leaders who are watching us right now, hopefully they still feel welcomed, uh, we're very excited to have you. Um, uh, will be in really good hands, because the, the communication, um, after board approval will begin immediately.
Okay, and then Mr. Roach and Mr. Damico will be available, like, maybe via phone or something, later, maybe in the fall, things start up, maybe things are a little rocky, and we gotta pull Wade in from the pool, and say, hey.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna be doing, so, they should be free.
Yeah.
He's gonna be at the hairdresser.
Isn't it nice to be loved, Mr. Roach, good.
Well, Mr. Roach is.
Cause we're not.
Mr. Roach's contract goes into July, so that, that's, uh, somewhat helpful.
I vote to extend his contract.
So, um, so that will be helpful in the, in the, uh, transfer process.
Any other comments? Okay, I, uh, call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero, um, I'd like to welcome Rafael and Stacy.
Sandy.
Sandy.
Sosi.
Thank you, and we're very excited to have both of you joining us, and, um, so, welcome.
Thank you.
President Wells, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero-two-three, authorizing filing of application for preschool TK and full-day kindergarten facility grant program.
All second?
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern, uh, any questions or comments?
We do, I think that, uh, Rob is, um, available, and, uh, Rob, thanks for hanging out, it's great to see you again.
Yeah, my pleasure, so, uh, happy to be here tonight, and it's the board's pleasure, I, I can give a short presentation on this resolution and the program that's behind it. Uh, so, again, I'm Rob Murray, the director of demographics and planning at King Consulting, you saw me a few months ago when I was presenting your demographic report, uh, just here supporting the team tonight, uh, to bring this item, uh, before you. Uh, and really, what this really goes back and hinges on, uh, something that we talked about when we were doing that, uh, demographic report, is this brand-new grade level that the state is, uh, mandating, so transitional kindergarten used to just be for the three months of birth dates that back when the starting, uh, the whole statewide kindergarten start date rolled back from December second to September second, those students who used to be old enough for kindergarten but weren't anymore, now, starting next school year, we're rolling, uh, that eligibility for transitional kindergarten out, uh, by mandate, a couple of months a year, uh, so that by twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, effectively TK becomes a new grade level, and, uh, all four-year-olds really start their public school at that time. So while next year, it would really just be out through the February second birth date, I know previously, you as a board have already, uh, made some decisions that that will be actually at Beverly Hills USD, open to students all the way through May thirtieth birth dates. Uh, so you'll have some, uh, definitely additional TK students, and what's nice is that we now have a, uh, at least measure of state funding that we, uh, are, you know, King is assisting BHUSD to apply for. Uh, and what's nice with this funding is that, uh, first off, it is coming from general fund dollars, so the money is there right now. This is not like a lot of the other state programs, where you're waiting for bond sales, or going through other kinds of processes to ultimately get the funds into your account, this is, the state very badly wants to get this money out there quickly. Uh, this first application round is open in April of this year, there will be a second one April of next year, but, yeah, again, pending this resolution, you'll be set to go to put in an application for this funding in the current year. Uh, each application, and this is the other really good and kind of unique part about this program, each application, uh, is for a single school site, and whoever across the state applies, uh, everyone, uh, has to get one of their applications funded before anybody then goes back and gets multiple applications funded, so, even though there are priority points for financial hardship, for high percentages of free and reduced lunch, uh, we still believe, uh, a lot of districts should have a very good chance to get one site funded in this program. Uh, and so, it's also a more generous match than a lot of the other state programs, with seventy-five percent of the total cost, uh, coming from the state funds with only a twenty-five percent local match, while a lot of other programs are fifty-fifty or at best sixty-forty. So some good things going with that program, and then what, what it's actually doing is we're talking about those specialty classrooms that will be for either, you know, full-day kindergarten or transitional kindergarten programs for those youngest kids, uh, who need special dimensions, so first off, just counter heights, uh, will be smaller, there'll be a lot more storage for those kind of manipulative learning tools that are really needed at those, uh, for those youngest students that you have. Uh, these are larger rooms, uh, if you're building new, uh, by Title V and Title twenty-two standards, uh, the state's looking for not less than thirteen hundred and fifty square feet, including a dedicated restroom, you'll have direct line of sight to that special playground, uh, close to parent drop-off. So there's just a lot of benefit that comes from having the structure of these classrooms, and especially with the increased number of these students coming in. Uh, it's just at least helpful that there is some funding that the state is making available, and again, there will be another opportunity this month and next year. But for now, uh, we are excited to go ahead and get that application in, and for your resolution here, we're, uh, we're, uh, opening it up so that all of your sites are potentially, uh, able to be applied for, and again, the, especially, uh, with that rule that everyone gets something funded before anyone goes back and gets multiple things funded, uh, it's really a great opportunity. So, uh, with that, I am happy to answer any more detailed questions, and, uh, again, at your pleasure.
Thank you very much, does anyone have questions? Mrs. Marcus?
Um, and you're talking about this, uh, funding that's coming up, of course, we're in the middle of a, of a construction at El Rodeo. Of course, we're in the middle of a, of a construction at El Rodeo, and I'm thinking a little bit ahead here. Are we doing anything to get ready for that in view of the, the change and that may cause some changes in what we're doing at El Rodeo in our construction program right now? That's something that just crossed my mind. Um, do you have any idea at all about how much money this first bite of the bullet might entail? Or does it depend on the number of kids, or, uh, is there just, uh, how are they going about to doing that?
Uh, so in terms of how much money is in the whole program, or how much money your application might be for?
How much what each application might, you know, what we could anticipate? That we would get for the...
Yeah, it, it comes down to, so for each, uh, new classroom that you are requesting to construct, I believe it comes out to around, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of state money. So it's, you know, it, it's enough to certainly, uh, seriously help with those costs.
Okay, is that for one classroom? Per school, if there were two classrooms, is it just, is that...
Yeah, that's part of it. However many site, uh, because there's a whole formula that you do, uh, per site uh, with how many classrooms you would be eligible for at that site. And that's just about the average of the amount per classroom that, uh, yeah, so if you had two classrooms, it would be about one point six in state money that you would get. And again, that's a approximate amount.
No, no, I understand that. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate all that information.
Um, I think that's, uh, all our questions, so thank you very much for the information. It's really wonderful. I'm really excited about the program.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing I'll, I'll just share with the board is that, um, is, as we continue to look at, um, the expansion of the TK program, um, there are other school districts as well, uh, that are in basic aid that are, are starting to mobilize uh, because it is, um, uh, more of a hardship to school districts that are in basic aid. So superintendents, we're starting to mobilize to see, um, what we can do from a legislative perspective to, uh, ensure that we get, um, not only, uh, opportunities and grants like, uh, Rob was just speaking about, but in addition, because the, the program, we believe, will continue, continue to grow each year.
Great. I will, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five zero. Uh, may I have a motion for the rejection of claim number six oh five four nine eight?
So moved.
The motion was, uh, made by Noah Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. Uh, next item on the agenda, Education Services. May I have a motion for the approval?
Move for the approval of the MOU with Los Virginus Unified School District for their early childhood teacher education.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by, um, Noah Margot. Uh, any comments?
I have a question on that. If, um, do we have any idea how many teachers are going to be, uh, going out or applying for getting trained in this program? I think it's wonderful that we're sharing.
We do. Um, approximately five or six teachers will be, uh, joining that program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five zero. The next item, they have a motion for the approval of Resolution twenty-two-one twenty-two-two dash zero-two-four to order governing board member election November eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Are you making a motion, or you want me to second it?
Because you could just say so moved.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Motion was moved by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five zero.
I will say that you guys just appointed me, and now it feels like you already want to remove me with the new election.
We thought you were gonna run.
You can stay.
That's not funny.
Okay. All right. Uh, communication from board members. Mrs. Marcus, would you like to begin?
Well, uh, I would just like to have everybody to know that I should never have to grieve alone. And I, you know, I'm pretty sure that my husband passed away a few years ago. And I couldn't have done it without the whole community that was there. To support me, and for that, I'm indeed very grateful. Um, I would like to make a comment about the pandemic in relationship to that because Edwin was pretty much isolated for a year and a half in hospice, as you know. And he paid very little attention to what the pandemic was doing worldwide. He was really oblivious to it. But thanks to the technology that we developed because of that, that there was literally worldwide people watching the funeral, which was amazing. I know there were people from India and from Asia, I mean, from, uh, Israel, as well as New York and Miami and Chicago and Minneapolis that were there at the funeral that I heard from afterwards. And I really appreciate, from the community, the outpouring of condolences and the sympathy because it just showed me what a grateful community that I belong to, and I cannot be happier, even though in the sad situation that I am so blessed to have the Beverly Hills community to support me. And for that, I want to say thank you.
Well, I want to start by, uh, expressing my, uh, deepest condolences again to Mrs. Marcus. As much as, you know, you're thinking the Beverly Hills community, it did strike me when I was at the funeral how many people were there, and I think how many people feel very lucky to have you and your family as a staple in this, uh, the community. You've touched so many lives, and so it was nice to see a lot of people from the community there. I also wanted to say it was really nice to, um, feel like I really got to know your, uh, late husband much, much better, hearing from your son and your daughter. And it was, it was, it was really a touching and a beautiful celebration of him. I also just wanted to, uh, congratulate, um, some great new talent that we have coming into the cabinet. Uh, very excited for Rafael and Sandy to be, uh, joining us, as much as we're gonna miss, uh, Wade. Uh, maybe we can pass a resolution requiring him to come, uh, every once in a while and say hello. Uh, and also, uh, but David as well, I did think that that was quite a testament to, um, you know, the work that he's done over the years to see that kind of strategic, uh, plan come together. And, uh, uh, I'm, I'm just looking forward to a bit of, you know, a reset. It's always sad when there's, you, you know, um, friends and people that have contributed so much leaving, but it also presents quite an opportunity to, uh, you know, to take things to the next level. And, uh, I'm, I'm really excited for that. Thanks.
I'd also like to express my condolences to Rochelle and to Rochelle's family. And I would like to say that it was, uh, there were some sad moments tonight, for sure. Um, thinking about the Holocaust and, uh, the lovely tribute that the children provided. Um, and it's also sad, too, that we will be missing such wonderful talent, Wade and Dave Damico. Um, and I also look forward to the incoming, um, personnel that I had the pleasure of meeting today, and I know that we will not be disappointed, and, um, they will be, um, true assets to our district. Thank you.
I, I know I joked earlier, so all kidding aside, um, welcome to Rafael and Sandy. Um, it's, it's exciting, um, and I, and I hope, um, you thrive here and, and help our, our district thrive as well. Um, I did want to, uh, welcome and congratulate Elena Castanon, our, our BHEA president, who was, um, recently re-elected, um, to her post. So thank you for being here, congratulations. Um, and I also see Alex Bowden in the back room, who will soon, I believe, becoming our new student board member. If people show up, who show up, uh, on Thursday, high school students, show up and vote. It's important, exercise your rights. Um, thank you. And Rochelle, um, so much has been said, but I, I was especially amazed on how, I don't really know your children, but they made, they seemed so genuinely pleased that I was there, and they made me feel welcomed. Um, and, and I learned so much about, uh, things I didn't know. So it was, it was kind of an eye-opening experience in a lot of ways, as sad as it was, so.
Well, uh, again, Rochelle, my deepest condolences to you and your family, and thank you for welcoming us into your home and into your, your life. It was really special to participate with you and your family and to learn more about your family. And I, you know, I've watched you take care of your husband for the last year and a half, and, and I am, you know, as well, I'm just so, I respect you so much for all that you've done as well. And, and also for your time on this board while doing that at the same time. So I just want to, you know, give you that at this time and let you know that we support you and we're here for you as we have always been, but especially now. And, and it really was a joy to, to watch you with your children. So thank you. And I am really excited to, for Sandy Sosi and for Rafael Guzman. I'm really excited for them to be joining our team. Uh, it's just, you know, it's exciting to have them, and it, I, I met Rafael during the interview process, so that was really fun, and we met Sandy today. So really welcome, and, uh, we're, it's gonna be very, um, nice to have them joining your team. And of course, we're very sad about, uh, losing Wade and, and David. So, but we, we have a little bit of time left there, and I, hopefully they're gonna be crossing over. So, um, as well, I do have to say that it was really nice to have the kids come today for the Holocaust. I think it, we can't have enough of, of moments like that where we are reflecting on, on that and, and on the past and, and about educating the children. So with that, I'd say thank you to everybody.
It was such a beautiful service, Mrs. Marcus. And, um, you know, you and I have spent, um, a lot of time together, um, at your home when you were president. Um, you know, I joke about the sandwich, and I, um, even though they were amazing. Um, what, what I was able to see you do is prioritize both the care of your husband, but also your work as a board member. And, um, and we spent hours because, um, you know, your husband needed care, and you were up, and you were down, and you were up, and you were down. Um, and, and there was never a time where we rushed through creating an agenda. There was never a time where we rushed through any questions that you had. Um, you were able to prioritize, uh, being a wife and, um, and also being a school board member. Um, and I will always cherish those times at your house. Um, and I said, would sit back, I would come back and tell the cabinet stories, and, and they can tell you um, that, I, I just, how amazing it was that you were able to do both things and stay focused and stay centered on the work. Um, and you never skipped a beat, uh, with any of the work. So, um, you know, people don't get to see, uh, the work of our board members behind the scenes, but it is an incredible commitment for our board to look through hundreds of pages, um, every week, um, and then to also then create an agenda, um, and then to work off of that agenda, and then special meetings and study sessions. And, um, and you did those things, um, and I was proud to be able to do those things with you. Um, I still look back and, and just am astonished that you were able to do it and pull that off. Um, but I know that I'm a better superintendent today, uh, by working with you and spending that time with you. Thank you.
Um, okay, well, I, there's, uh, no other comments. I am going to officially adjourn the meeting. Um, it is eight eighteen. Good night, everybody.